And we've got a quorum. And so, just for the record. Well, Claudia, do you want to take just a role for this meeting? I know it's not a council meeting, but as just for the record, we might take a role.
Counselor Geary.
He's here, he's just turning on lights.
Counselor Garvin.
I don't see him on.
Counselor Minky.
Present.
Counselor Peralta. Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Council President Drabkin. And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. This evening, we are going to have our monthly Level 10. And so I will call our Level 10 meeting to order. We have had an agenda sent out to you, some homework sent out to you. And so with that all being said, I'll turn it over to Wendy, who will be facilitating our discussion tonight. So Wendy Stassen, welcome. It's good to see you. And if you're in town, it's great to have you in town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to be here. Beautiful city. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share screen. And this is the agenda that you guys have seen in your packet. I did add one addition that you guys should have gotten yesterday. That was the homework and the opening, the opening exercise that we're going to do. So our purpose for this meeting is we're going to agree to the top five to seven principles that will be refined and utilized as guiding principles for the City Council out of the agreement that we have that has 13 or so currently. So let's go ahead and start with the opening. Your homework was to come up with your favorite leadership quote and to tell us why that's your favorite. I'm going to call on Counselor Chenoweth to start us up.
I so appreciate that.
I know.
Well, I failed on this homework assignment on this one because I don't have one.
Oh, good. No, that's great.
I actually have four and kind of combined together. There's an E at the end of my name, it's ETH.
ETH.
That's okay, that's a common misspelling. But combined together, they kind of give the overall feeling that I have. So I'll fire them at you.
Great.
Number one is by Stephen Covey. And it's failing organizations are usually over-managed and under-led. Number two is by Pete Hoekstra. It's real leadership is leaders recognizing that they serve the people they lead.
Okay.
Might need to... Do I need to go slower?
Yeah, a little bit.
Last one's really big, so don't even bother to write the last one.
Okay, can you give me the second one? And then I will let us just listen to the last one.
Well, I got, that's, this is second, there's four, so there's actually two more. Real leadership is leaders recognizing they serve the people that they lead.
That they lead. Okay, now I won't try to get this one.
Well, so I'll give you the big one. This is from Albert Einstein. Great spirits have always found violent opposition from mediocrities. The latter does not understand it when a man does not thoughtlessly submit to hereditary prejudices, but honestly and courageously uses his intelligence.
Great.
And then the last one is by Jack Weatherford. It's if you can't swallow your pride, you can't lead. Even the highest mountain had animals that step on it.
Right.
And it kind of encapsulates it all. It's a combination of you need to really think through problems and think through things, use your intelligence, don't just go with your biases, mixed with humility, understanding you're serving those you lead. And you have to swallow your pride. And lastly, that you can't be micromanaging people. It never works out well.
Yeah, great. Can't be micromanaging. Awesome. Thank you so much. You set the bar very high. That's great. Thank you very much. Hey, who wants to go next with their leadership? Ooh, Chris South here. Let's see. Hands. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
My, 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 my leadership quote comes from one that Chris had. It's Dr. Stephen Covey. I had the privilege of taking a class from him when I was in college. He was a professor before he got, he got really known. So I took organizational behavior class from him. But it comes out of his, one of his books, The Seven Habits of Effective Leadership, number two, and that is beginning with the end in mind. And so for me, that means that we begin each day, each task or each project with a clear vision of our desired direction or what we want to have the outcome to be. And then we continue by flexing, you know, the proactivity muscles or, or everything that we would have within ourselves to make things happen. So that would be mine.
Proactivity muscles. I'm going to use, I'm going to use that, flex our proactivity muscles to make things happen. I love it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, who wants to go next with their leadership quote? Kelly, Sal, Remy?
I'll go.
All right, Zach. You know I was coming to you next, right?
Yeah, I have a, I have a semi-long one, which I sent you so you don't have to type it out and as I dictate it, you can just copy and paste.
Great.
And then I have, I have a runner-up that I enjoy. And they aren't sort of probably capital L leadership quotes. They're more quotes I find relevant to my service. First one's by George Bernard Shaw. This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one, being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clot of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community. And as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it what I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die, for the harder I work, the more I live. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is no brief candle to me. It is a sort of splendid torch, which I have got to hold off, which I have got a hold of for the moment. And I want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it on to future generations.
That's great.
And then the second one is, is also I find helpful to keep in mind. And I'll break the trend of white guy quotes and quote Gertrude Stein. You look ridiculous if you dance. You look ridiculous if you don't dance, so you might as well dance.
Ted. Okay, and do you want to, let's just a brief about why? Anything else you want to say about why you chose this?
Well, I think the latter is, is, is while it's funny and comical, it also reminds me that what I think is ridiculous might not actually be ridiculous. And I also don't really have a fear of embarrassment. So just go ahead and tread boldly onto the boards and let it fall where it falls. And then the other one is just sort of a reminder that everything is bigger than me and I'm part of that. And so I'm, I'm just a piece of a big machine. I need to serve my, serve my part and do my, play my role and kind of, yeah.
Great. Okay, Kelly, you want to go next?
Somehow I didn't do my homework, so I'm rapidly looking at quotes here.
Oh, you go to you last.
No, no, that's okay. There are several that are good here, but I'm trying to decide between a number of them. I am looking at women's quotes, so you have to forgive me. This one really speaks to me, though. Because I'm a woman, I must make unusual efforts to succeed. If I fail, no one will say she doesn't have what it takes. They will say, women don't have this, what it takes. And that's by Claire Booth Lewis.
And you want to talk to us about why that speaks to you? What, what is it about that that really draws you?
Well, I liked it because honestly, it's kind of true. I don't know. I grew up in the age of budding feminism and I, I have always found it to be, you know, women have to do a little bit extra.
Yeah.
I like it.
Great. Women need to do a little bit extra. Okay. Who wants to go next?
I can go next.
Okay, thanks, Remy.
Absolutely. So I recently shared some of my favorite leadership quotes in here. And, but I'm going to go ahead and restate those. And then I have also collected additional things that speak to me recently and particularly in terms of what I believe our intent is here. So the Martin Luther King Jr. quote that I recently read and will read again is, "We need leaders not in love with money, but in love with justice. Not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." And then Theodore Roosevelt's The Man in the Arena speech. And I figured I'd read a little bit more, read it exactly this time because my paraphrase was weak at best. And, and so that goes, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly." It goes on, but that's kind of where it sums up. The, the last line reads, "So that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." But honestly, that last part of it doesn't really speak to me because to me, that language is rather exclusive and judgmental in those, in those last two lines. Whereas the rest of it speaks towards effort and being intentional in your efforts in leadership. And then, and then I, this isn't really a leadership quote, but I saw this, I saw this yesterday. And it was really interesting to me where it was physically in the world. It's an Audre Lorde quote. And I'm not sure if, how familiar that everyone is with Audre Lorde, but she's a famous black gay writer from the 60s. And, and I was in a terminal in an airport where they were working on improvements. But currently, that space is vacant and unused. And I found the, I found, I found at first irony and then inspiration in the fact that this space currently was, you know, where these words that were intended to be elevated were in a, in a place where there was no audience there to see them. And then, as I reflected on it, I changed my thinking about it. And I thought, well, perhaps this is a spa, you know, this is a space where they're planning for the future. And so while right now, these words aren't, aren't, aren't on display for the masses, that the intent is to create this more inclusive future, which is what I feel we're here to do as well, to have a council that functions in that way and a community. And so the Audre Lorde quote is, "It is not our differences that divide us. It is our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences." I don't usually like to frame things in the, in the negative. And that kind of has a, you know, saying it, talking about our inabilities instead of our abilities isn't my, my go-to. But I do think that, I do think that it's relevant to our conversations as a council because we're not going to be one and the same. We're not going to have the same approach or the same thinking. And I believe what we need is to find our abilities to, to accept each other's differences, to celebrate them and understand what each member of this council brings to the table or to the dais, as the case may be.
Great. Great. Thank you. What do you think, Remy? Awesome. Okay, who do we have left? Sal, and I'm not sure if Adam has joined us in the interim. Do you want to go next, Sal?
Sure, Wendy. Good to see you. Sorry, I'm just going to be on audio for now, so I can facilitate reading this. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, good. So my quote is from Robert Kennedy's Day of Affirmation speech, which he gave in Cape Town, South Africa in 1966, a few years before he was assassinated. And I would just say, if anybody gets a chance to read the speech, I would encourage reading the whole thing because he really lays out the foundation for, you know, what they were trying to accomplish with Western civilization and government at that time. And I just think it's a really good frame for people to understand. So I'm just going to read one part of it. "There is," said an Italian philosopher, "nothing more difficult to take in hand, more perilous to conduct, or more certain in its success than to take the lead in the introduction of a new order of things. Yet this is the measure of the task of your generation, and the road is strewn with many dangers. First is the danger of futility, the belief that there's nothing one man or woman can do against the enormous array of world's ills, against misery, against ignorance, or injustice, or violence. Yet many of this world's great movements of thought and action have flowed from the work of a single man. A young, a young monk began the Protestant Reformation. A young general extended an empire from Macedonia to the borders of the earth. And a young woman reclaimed the territory of France. It was a young Italian explorer who discovered a new world, and a 32-year-old Thomas Jefferson who proclaimed that all men are created equal. Give me a place to stand, said Archimedes, and I will move the world. These people move the world, and so can we all. Few will have the greatness to bend history, but each of us can work to change a small portion of events. And in the total of all these acts, will be written the history of this generation. Thousands of Peace Corps volunteers are making a difference in isolated villages and slums in dozens of countries. Thousands of unknown men and women in Europe resisted the occupation of Nazis. And many died, but all added to the ultimate strength and freedom of their countries. It is from these numberless, diverse acts of courage such as these that the belief, that the, the belief that human history is thus shaped. Each time a person stands up for an ideal or acts to improve the lot of others or strikes out against an injustice, he sends out a ripple of tiny hope that crossing forth, crossing each other from a million different centers of energy and daring those ripples to build a current which can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance." So anyway, that's, that's my quote.
That's amazing. So Sal, can you, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to send me that so I can, I got Sal behind him, then I wanted to listen, so. I don't type that fast.
I don't blame you. No, I'll send it to you, for sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. I definitely want to capture it all. Do you want to talk a little bit about why you chose this?
Yeah, I, I chose that because, you know, at, at this age that we live in, there's this belief that, that there's nothing any person can do. Like, the problems that we have are so big that, and I feel that oftentimes on city council. You know, I mean homelessness is, is a national issue and, and, but the reality is that even though any one person can't necessarily change the world, all of us in our own individual ways can take action. And from the, it's the result of that collective action that, that does create change. And, and so I think what I really appreciate about this speech is that it recognizes the enormity of the problems that we're facing and yet also recognizes that the solution is through collaborative and, you know, effort from a lot of people. And to me, the essence of leadership is to, is to inspire that and encourage it and make, and that, and that the point of the service is about something larger.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Sal. That's great. Are we missing anyone? Did Adam, have we seen Adam yet? No?
I don't, I don't see him on the line yet.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you guys so much. I, one of the things that I love about asking that question is that we get to see what, we're inspired. We're all leaders in our own right. In, on the city council, you guys are leaders. And you truly are inspirational. You guys are doing this work, right? And so amazing quotes, really inspirational. And it's, it's deeply meaningful to hear what the, where those, that inspiration comes from for each of us as leaders. So, so we have a lot of work to do today. We're going to, I'm going to, the only action items are for me. I'm, and we're in process on, on all of them. The goals have been adopted. We have a, we're doing some of the work for the Vision Traction Organizer tonight because we're coming up with our five to seven guiding principles. And then we have the why exercise you guys already did that will be processed and brought back to you, which will be the third thing we'll want to put in that before we bring it back to you. So more on that later. Tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to refine, as we talked about in the previous Level 10 meeting, which was a great conversation. We determined that we needed some modifications or some processing of that operating agreement that we had to guide the work that the city council's doing. And so that's what we're going to do tonight. You guys did some deep thought work before you came. And what we're going to work on in this session is we're going to work on really, well, first of all, we're going to hear what your top five are. And we're going to take a vote. It doesn't have to be ordered. We're just five for each person. The ones that get the most, we're going to talk about first. And then we're going to go in descending order. And then at the end, we're going to take another vote. And so really, what you're working on doing is we're working on listening to each other around the reasoning behind the votes that they chose. And then at the end, when we feel like we really thoroughly understood each other, we're going to take a vote. And the top five with the top, most votes are going to be our top five. So does anybody have any questions? Or Remy, did you want to, to say anything before we get started? You had mentioned you might want to say something. But if you don't have, if you don't, then we can go on and get started.
Let, let's, let's start. Perhaps I'll come back at the end.
Perfect. Okay, that sounds great. Okay, so your homework was to do some thinking exercises and choose your top five. Not an easy thing to do, I know. But this is part of the process where we really wrestle it down to what we think are the 20% guiding principles that are going to produce 80% of the results for us. And when we internalize those and we get, we attain alignment across this group behind those five, top five that we choose, amazing things will happen, right? So we're going to go around and one person at a time, you just tell me the numbers and I'll just tally the votes. They're not in rank order. It's just a tick mark for each vote that you have. And then we're going to start our discussion. So, Mr. Mayor, your top on my screen. You want to start with the numbers that you chose for your top five?
I have them, yes. I have number one.
Okay.
Number two.
Okay.
Number seven.
Number seven.
Number eight.
Number eight.
And a number 11.
And number 11. All right, great. Okay, Zach, you're up next.
Uh, okay. You ready for me?
I am.
One.
One, okay.
Two.
Okay.
Six.
Okay.
Seven.
Okay.
Eleven.
Okay, Sal, you're next.
Sorry about that. I'm here.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm having a hard time with my screen. Just bear with me one second.
Okay.
Every time I try and minimize this window, it's not doing it. Okay. All right, there, that worked. Okay, so I had one, two.
Okay.
Eleven, six.
Eleven, six.
Uh, I think I, I, one, two, eleven. I think I only had four.
Okay.
But it, but one comment. I mean, I, I don't see a huge need to pull anything out of here.
Great. Okay, um, hey, Remy, you're next.
Okay, I'm going to say two didn't make my list, but it was up there. And it was like, I went back and forth and I had to keep reading, keep reading two and comparing it to others. But my list is, oh, actually, I, one, 11, 13, 14. So actually, there is room for two. I'm just bad at counting sometimes.
Okay, so one, two.
One, two, 11, 13, 14.
11, 13, 14. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Remy. Kelly?
One, five.
One?
One, five, 11, 13, and 14.
11. 11, 13, and 14. Great. Okay. Counselor Chenoweth?
I'm, I think I'm the only one who does not have number one on my list. I have, I'm going to try to rearrange this so you're going in order as you go down. I have two, six, seven, 11, and 13. And then I had a rule that had it been on here, would have made my top five, but it wasn't here.
Okay.
And that would be, I will endeavor to view all decisions, actions, and comments through the lens of, and this is in quote unquote, best possible motive.
Okay. Great. I'm going to put one under that. Okay, so let's start in order of, thank you for that. Did I miss anyone? Is Adam coming up?
No, I don't see him coming on yet.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure I don't pass over him if he does. So let's start from the top, the one that has the most votes. Or there's one and two, it looks like, are tied. And then it looks like 11. So we'll start with those top three and then we'll go from there. So from the people who voted for these as their top three, why don't we hear some discussion around what your thinking is about why this is, from your thinking time exercises, why this was such an important one?
For you. I, I'd be happy to start with that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think in, in my time on council, there have been a number of things that have come before me where it really hasn't, the decision or the, the question that's before us really hasn't aligned with my personal perspective on, on the direction I would like to see something go. And I have been able to also step back from that, whether it was for, you know, reasons of legality, right? If, if we were working on something that was quasi-judicial or, or because at times, there, there's just, it, sometimes it is stronger to speak as one. And when I have made my position and it's been clear that it's just me that has that perspective or something of that nature, there are times when I felt it is more important to speak as, as a collective rather than promote my own perspective. And I think that that... And I think that that creates better, um, relationships.
Great. Okay, who else? Who else would like to share their thoughts on this, on this one?
I, I voted for this and I, I, um, I think I spoke up a little bit about it last time we discussed. But, you know, as someone who's been on the losing end of many votes, um, not losing, just been on the not winning side of many votes.
Other side of the votes.
I mean, and, and also, you know, that and, and my, you know, um, predilection for process, believing that the, 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 a well-working group produces good results. I don't, it's not up to me to agree or disagree with the results. But I, I believe and understand the process and trust the process. And so it, whatever comes out of that is, while it, it may not be what I had tried to put in and, and get out, it, it all, you know, I believe in what comes out of it if the group is working and functioning and everyone's on board, um, and a part of that process. So the, the results are, are what they are because it's a good machine and it delivers, it delivers good products.
Great.
Wendy, I'll go, I'll go ahead and just give some thoughts. After, you know, 16 years of being on the council, I love the opportunity that we have to discuss and talk freely, express our opinions and try to gain more knowledge through discussion. I just love that whole process. And many times I've not been knowledgeable enough. And if a member of the council can bring in more knowledge and understanding, um, that has been very helpful to me. You know, uh, the thing that I really, really enjoy is that that robust discussion can lead us to a decision that, uh, with the collectiveness and the experience and knowledge of the council, we're going to, I think, come up with a better determination than we would be able to do on our own. So I think the closing thought that I would have is that all the power is in the council. You know, and it's not individually, it's when we're collectively working together to come to an agreement. And, and then to be able to, um, you know, again, collectively then know that that, that has been worked through and discussed appropriately.
Great. Great. Okay, who else wants to weigh in on this one? Okay, so, uh, if no one else wants to, uh, weigh in on this one, we'll move on to the second one, most votes. Not the, uh, the discussion on this, even if you didn't vote on that before we move on to the next one. Okay, uh, the next one, I will respect other members of the council, even if we disagree philosophically by articulating my view, listening openly to their perspectives and rationale, sharing my position and intended actions with the council in a timely manner. So who wants to go first on discussion of your, your thoughts on this one? Any comment on this one? No?
Me, this is really straightforward.
Okay.
But at, at, at the same token, it's very straightforward, but we've struggled with it a little bit. Maybe we feel unknowingly in not having respect how we approach people and, but I think we've come a long way because we've had a lot of discussion about this, about having respect and working through the, uh, you know, the rules of, of the council. I, I think we've come a long way. But even though it is very, even though it is very straightforward, we've struggled with it at times.
Great.
I think maybe also just adding that, while I do agree it's straightforward, and, uh, from really reading through this, pulling important words out, it's sort of that sharing my position and intended actions with the council, right? Not, um, yeah, that specifically the, the rest of the council, right? Those, those discussions and those thoughts and, and, uh, articulations and working through that process is done with the council is the agreement here, right? Not, um, not others, although you may seek others for, for, I guess it's a word that I come to as counsel, but you may seek others for counsel. But you, you, you will ultimately in a timely manner bring those to council to have those discussions and work through things with, not, not, um, non-council.
Okay. Great, thank you, Zach. Anybody else want to give a comment on this one? What, what do you think has caused you to, if this is, is, does feel straightforward, what do you think has caused this to not, uh, make this difficult to manifest? Is there anything that we want to talk about with that before we move on to the next one?
I guess I'm gonna just make one comment and I'm probably not gonna make a whole lot of comments for the rest of this session. And that's that, um, you know, these are, these are, um, norms that we're trying to hit, excuse me, I've got a cat climbing, climbing all over me. It's one reason I have the camera off. Uh, no, they're, they're, they're norms that we're trying to hit. Um, and the reason that people have problems in, you know, meeting these is, is not that there's a problem with any particular rule, it's that we're human beings. And when you deal with contentious issues, there are going to be, you know, uh, conflicts and, and people failing to be their best selves at different times and so on. And I think that's okay. And I think the most important thing is to have space to do that and have something that you can come back to that, you know, you're using to try and guide your actions. And so for that reason, I think that like going through and, I mean, and I, 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 I wanna respect your process, but I do think that just going through and individually picking out each individual thing and examining it for me is just not the, the most help, you know, it's, it's, it's just not as helpful as, as I, I, I would like it. For me, it's more like trying to work and they, trying to work through ground rules and expectations and things that we can refer back to. So, anyway, that's my general comment, thanks.
Yeah.
Wendy? Go ahead, Chris.
I, I was just gonna comment her, onto her question of what makes it hard to follow. And I, I think probably what makes it hard to follow is that each individual has a different definition of the word respect. And what that requires and what that means. You know, we can, we can, um, not only that, but we have justifications for when we choose not to respect. You know, if somebody has done something that we feel is egregious, that's justified to be disrespectful to address that issue. As, as an example. So I, I think it, it lies in the meaning and the application of the word respect.
Okay.
I have a, something to add on this as well, Wendy, when you're ready?
Yeah. Go for it.
I think that the partisan politics of the last election cycle infiltrated our, what were supposed to be non-partisan, uh, elections. And the tenor that was being set at the national level came down to the local level. I can tell you that before this last election cycle, you can believe this or not, but there were counselors that I really didn't know and, and I've never cared, but I really didn't know, um, what their party politics were. And I think that that has created challenges for us.
You still with us, Remy?
Yeah, 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 I just stopped talking, I know.
Talented for us, okay, that was it, I thought I lost you. Okay.
Not, not wanting to belabor this, but just out of curiosity, how do you apply that to this specific rule, Remy? Just, just from my own knowledge and understanding of where you're coming from?
Well, because what we saw on the national stage was a lack of listening. Um, it became okay to interrupt, it became okay to yell, it became to okay, not okay, but it became normalized. I would, I would much rather say normalized than okay. Uh, it, it became normalized to treat each other with, I think what we could all agree upon is a very low level or a, a complete lack of respect. And I think that while that was being demonstrated, we, um, we saw that happening in the election cycle. And, and Chris, I'm not pointing a finger at you, so please don't think that I am. Um, I am talking about the way that our local elections went. Uh, it was very bizarre, it was very different than anything that has happened historically. And then because those were so divisive, I feel like that flowed into our council setting. Historically, the, uh, an individual's demographics, if you will, maybe that's not quite the right word, really didn't matter. And, and it wasn't really something we discussed or, or, or knew about. Or, or you might learn, uh, about somebody's perspective, but you learned about somebody's perspective because you were spending time getting to know them. And I hope I've answered your question.
You have thoroughly answered it and thank you. Um, I, I, I would agree with you, although I don't think it's because it flowed down from the national scene. I think it's the tenor of politics in general, um, has shifted. And, um, and, and every point you made, I absolutely agree, so I won't, I won't belabor it. Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Wendy?
Yeah.
One, one thought that I have is, is something that we've talked a whole lot, uh, at our level tens. And it's, it's a theme that comes through the traction material. And that is, it is okay to have high topic tension. I mean, that's where you have discussion, that's where you get your ideas out. But it's not okay to have high personal tension. We've got to, we've got to keep, so again, to, 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 to come from the, the mind and, and using of facts, it, it's the emotional piece that gets out of hand sometimes. And I, I just, that comes to my mind when we're talking about respect. You know, understanding that we can have high topic tension but low personal tension, uh, because we've got to be, we've got to be respectful during that process.
Great.
Can I say one more thing, I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, don't be sorry, great.
This, this is to Sal. And I'm not meaning, if this sounds at all parental, it's not meaning to be. I'm just, just, I'm trying to share my, my, where my heart and mind is at. I really hope you don't check out for the rest of this conversation. Your, your input is just as important as everybody else's. And just as much, we, we need to hear it, understand it, and know where you're coming from. It helps to build the trust that we need to build.
Uh, thanks for that, Chris. Now, I'm listening and, uh, if I have anything to chime in, I'll chime in, but I'm not planning on, on adding a whole lot. I added most of what I had to say.
Good. Great. Okay, any other comments, um, on this one? Okay, so let's go down to the next one then. Uh, which was number 11. I will recognize that the council's role is to set policy and not to be administrators. So let's talk about this one.
You know, it's interesting, I'm, I'll, I'll jump in. We were talking about respect in the previous one. And I think this is one of the areas we show disrespect. Is when we are trying to, um, be administrators, we're taking other counselors' time. You know, we only have so much volunteer time that we have available. And the amount of time we spend, if we get bogged down in the, in the administration as opposed to setting policy, we're really being kind of disrespectful to the rest of the crew. So, um, to me, it's just more of that, how do we show respect? Not, and not just to the council, but also to the staff.
I don't, I don't follow that comment. I, I don't understand what you said.
So explain it to me in a different way. I'll try. No promises at success. But, um, you know, wh- what I've seen in my short time of either being in, in council sessions or by, by being just a watcher or being a member as, as an active participant, is when the meetings go the longest, when we spend the most amount of time in a meeting, often it's when we start focusing on areas that really are administrating and not setting policy. And if we can, when we do that, often it's because we have a passion on that particular topic, we have a love on that particular topic, we want to get into the nitty gritty there and start administrating it, micromanaging it. But what we're doing is taking a whole bunch of time, we're already very busy people, we're already very, and I'm not saying I begrudge it, don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But in a way, we're showing disrespect because we're putting what, the micromanagement and what we're wanting to do above the time that everybody else is spending on this topic. And I've been guilty of it. I, I can remember one particular meeting where Sal made a comment of, along, along the lines of, we beat this one to death. And I took away from that as I walked away from that conversation and thought about it after I got home, which I tend to do. I tend to be somebody that over analyzes things, um, that I had actually extended that conversation out so far as to have been disrespectful to Sal's time. And he was like, can we be done with this and move on? And I think we have, we, it, it kind of just shows that the, a, a little bit of a lack of respect when we carry things out like that. Am I making sense now, does that make, did that do better?
Uh, that articulated your answer, I, I gotta be honest, I don't think that's totally germane to the, the reasoning behind 11. Um, and I'll provide my backing to 11. Uh, I see, I see really this is how this governs my time not spent in coun- council chambers as, as opposed to time I spend working on council stuff, of interfacing with staff for building policy positions and understanding the workings of the city. This pretty clearly reads, uh, my job is not to spend outside of council chamber time or non-politics time meddling with the business of the city and the implementation of the policy we set. While I, I, I think if I was to pull something constructive out of your thread, it was, is, sometimes we can go far too down the rabbit hole and waste each other's time. And sure, I, I, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm guilty of that too and we can have that discussion. But as far as what 11 tells me is, um, it's not our business to tell, you know, pick the, pick the magazines on the shelves of the library. It's our decisions to talk about, um, how we should grow and build our, our library and what we offer our community. So that's what this one tells me.
I, I totally agree, you're, you're in the meat of it. I was just pointing out, uh, kind of expressing my earlier point that the definition of respect, um, I was kind of going back to that, not really trying to focus on this rule. Um, my apologies for maybe misleading there.
Wendy, one, one piece for me that helps this be so straightforward is it's taken right out of the, uh, the charter, our roles and responsibilities. It's laid out there. And so if there's anyone that's having a hard time understanding what our responsibility and role is, go to the charter, it's there. And, uh, and I, I agree with many of the things Chris said and, and what Zach said. You know, we, we can't go down the rabbit holes and we've got to have enough respect for how, in, in, in my, in, when, when I was writing up my thoughts around this, we have to, we have to have enough respect for those that we have hired at the city, those that Jeff have hired. They come with expertises, they come with education, they come as experts. And when we start administrating their programs as laypeople, we go off to a big, a big area. It's, it's like, you know, if somebody had a computer question, you know, you better not come to me, go to Chris, because he's an expert, you know? And so again, if we, if we step outside and start micromanaging and becoming administrators, we put aside that which we've hired, we're paying people good money and we've got some of the best in the state. We need to have respect for them to let them do their job. And that's all funnelled through Jeff, you know, as, as the administrator. You know, he's got tremendous value and it's, you know, we, we maybe need to do- we, we maybe need to do a better job sometimes on policy, but not administration.
Anybody else want to contribute to this before we go on? Okay, great. So the next one, we have three on 13. Let's go up and see if we have any more with three. Three on seven, three on six. So let's go with six first. Six, um, I will not personalize issues or decisions. So let's talk about that.
This will just be my one comment. This is the har- the thing that's hardest for me personally to uh, to follow just because whenever I work hard on something or um, put in a lot of effort and get criticism, particularly if I feel it's unfair, I I very much tend to personalize it. So um, just pointing out a bit of self-awareness and uh, part of the reason why I thought it was important to have the rule.
Okay. Oh, it's a, it's a challenging thing that probably as humans challenges all of us. So it's a good to have a guiding principle that talks about how, as we see that, being conscious of how, as we see that come up, how we uh, how we kind of focus ourselves again. Okay.
Could I oddly jump on the why I did not vote for this one uh, conversation line?
Yeah, and this is a great thing. It doesn't have to just be someone who voted for it. So good, thank you for bringing that up, Remy. Any comments?
Yeah, so this ability is something that we have to actively work on as individuals in that um, w- we are not all, we don't all come to the table emotionally intelligent enough to decipher when we're personalizing something. That is a a skill that I has to be learned. And so saying, I will not personalize something and knowing how to be self-reflective enough to recognize that that's happening and then be active in changing your experience is a really, uh, that that's a very tall order. That's asking for a a high level of uh, emotional intelligence at all times from all members of the council. Um, and then on the second part of it, um, of of not personalizing issues, that's one thing. And then not personalizing decisions is another thing because sometimes the decisions of the council affect us as individuals, either directly or indirectly. And so it may not be because the council uh, is doing something. Um, or, hold on, sorry. It, it's uh, give me a second to to pull my words together. Um, I don't believe the council would ever make a decision that was directed at an individual, but that doesn't mean that at times individuals aren't affected. Of course, if there's something that would directly affect us, we would recuse ourselves from that decision, et cetera. But there are other ways in which the decisions of the council reverberate into our lives because we all live here together.
And Wendy, in a much less eloquent way than uh, Council President Drabkin said. For me, I didn't vote for that because I felt, in a general way, one and two addresses that. Uh, a- again, they tell, one and two tells us that we can be passionate about when we're in the discussion phase. But when we've made a decision, then we depersonalize it and we speak as a council. So in my mind, I could see w- number six being a part of one and two. Other than six gets very, very specific, or one and two is general. But I see it incorporating itself in one and two.
Okay, anything else on this one?
Yeah, if I may.
Sure.
So this was, I I actually put on my sheet in order the way in which I wanted, I I felt they were important. And so the irony that I'm going to follow up those two statements with, this was my number one most important rule. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't escape me. Um, to me, this is like the key or the golden rule of effective policy. Um, if, 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 i- and it goes two ways. It's, it's not just in, I'm not going to, in the way that I convey things personalized them, but I'm also not going to read or receive things in a personal way. Right? It's, it's, I'm going to do my best to look at everything at, from a policy perspective and try to keep the personal out of there. Um, and if, if, if we're going to be effective policymakers, that is like the number one, one of the number one things we have to do. I mean, I realize and I accept, we all come with our biases. We all come with our personalities, and that's going to be part of that decision-making process. But as we're communicating, like in, like in this, where you have a disagreement, as we're communicating, we have to have a way, there has to be a rule that defines, you know, this is it, right here, that we cannot allow any personal, um, we don't want to take things personally or receive them personally. Um, and I think, again, this, this is where problems break down. And I really appreciated um, Sal's um, self-deprecation, um, and self-awareness. And I, I think it's, it's, all of us struggle with this at some le- level. Um, so I think maybe I, that's good.
Great. Okay, anything else on this one before we go on to the next one? Okay, let's talk about number seven. If I have a concern or issue with another council member or mayor, I will go to that person first and in a positive, private, and timely manner and share that concern. I will present my feelings and how those feelings affect me. Well, let's talk a little bit about this. This got three votes. What are we thinking on this one? No comments on this one? We can go on to the next one that has, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
I I'm just looking, I didn't vote for this one, but I do feel that it, it's kind of, uh, I know there's a place in the Bible where it specifically says, if you've got a problem with your brother, you should go and talk with them and take a friend with you, you know? And and do the, if you, you know, go by yourself the first time, but take a friend with you if it's still unresolved. And I, I feel that this is an important one. Uh, even though I did not particularly vote for it, I just, um, I feel it's the right way to handle things if you are having an issue with someone, is to go and talk to them. You know, you may not resolve it, but at least you might have a better understanding of why you're disagreeing.
I, I have, I, I was just looking at my notes, and I said, this is the way that we deal professionally with one another, praise in public and share concerns privately. And and again, you know, if I were, if I were in my workplace, it would be praise in public and and uh, if if I was going to reprimand, I would do that privately.
Great. Any other comments on this one? Dr. Chenoweth? No?
Yeah, I, I, well, I mean, I have to be careful. Um, but um, yeah, I, I feel like not following this is a formula for taking an issue and making it a lot larger than it needs to be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, following this is a way to show really kind of the highest respect you can for a fellow counselor. Um, my thoughts.
Okay.
I feel like this is too vague, to be honest. A concern, an issue, where does that start? And and to what degree? Uh, if you don't like the language someone used, is, is that an issue you go to them with? I, I feel like this is so overarching or perhaps it's so undefined, it's so obtuse, that h- how can you follow something where you don't know where the starting point and the ending point is? Have I had concerns with different counselors many times over the last years? Yes. Do I 100% of the time? And does it warrant a follow-up conversation? No, sometimes it's just a, okay, well, that's, you know, their decision, that's their, their choice in moving forward. And and I, I, I just think this is too vague. If it were to be a part of this, it would need to be um, more narrow in scope.
The sentence being, okay. Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
I get, when I think of this, I, you know, I think of how passionate Sal is about some things. And I think, you know, I know that there are some things, most of the time, it doesn't really bother me the way the council votes, but sometimes I just don't get it. And if I can understand why a person votes the way they did, if they haven't, at least to my understanding, explained it well enough, you know, it just makes me feel better to go forward and and ask. And I really have been reticent about doing this, given some of the issues we've had in the last year. But I do think, you know, if it's something that nags at you, you should go and talk to that person.
Great. And let's go on in the interest of time. Uh, let's go on to the next one that has three. And that's number 13. I will engage in a robust dialogue with the community in a constructive and inclusive manner. Let's talk about this one. Any, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
I did vote for this one. I felt odd about it. It, this one seems to me to be the one thing that is pointing towards the outside of the council and how we deal, how we deal with the outside people, uh, the people we're working for. And um, I, I feel like it's important to uh, represent the council in what the council, at least their decision-making, if they haven't come to a decision, you know, just say, well, these are the possibilities. I, I, I just think that was kind of an interesting one. Um, but to be constructive and to be inclusive and to say, and to thank them for their interest and, you know, appreciate what they're, what they're asking, and they're asking you. So um, just kind of wanted to put my two cents worth in.
Great. Remy, did you still have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I also agree that, I mean, I loved that this one was outward facing. Um, uh, because what it's, to me, what it's signifying is that we're not just having our opinion, our uh, input uh, and and information, um, data, opinions formed by the circles that we already came to the job with. What this is saying is part of what we are agreeing to and the way that we're going to work together is that we don't just listen to one another, but we listen to the community as a whole, and we all agree to do that.
Great, thank you. Chris?
Um, so I have to admit that I made a mistake, and I said that I voted for this. Um, I actually did not.
Oh, okay.
Um, I actually voted for 10 instead of 13. Uh, having said that, um, I do really like 13. I didn't, it wasn't that I didn't want it. It's just in in narrowing them down, it went off the list.
Yeah. Okay, no problem. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any other comments on number 13?
Well, Wendy, you know, the thing that we talked a little bit about is we are trying to narrow this down, but it's not that we're going to take these principles. As Sal said, all of them have merit. All of them have some time testing to it. We're not going to forget it. We're not going to make it a part of what we do, but it may not be our elevator speech that we can say, here, here are the ones that we voted on, the top five. But we have another seven really good ones out there. So it's not, you know, it's not pick it and or leave it. Because I think these got, these are, there's some really, really good uh, time-tested principles that we've had great success with. But it's just not, it's just not the top five, it's others. But if there's a priority, because we feel it's so critical, we, 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 that's why we bring it down to maybe five or whatever.
So critical. Okay, so let's talk about, um, see if there's any more with three. Okay, let's talk about 14 has two. Will follow the intention and the law concerning doing council business outside of council meetings. Any thoughts on this? Okay, let's go um, up to, I think we're down to ones with one. So let's talk about some of these. Uh, so number five, I will say what I mean with no underlying messages in a positive manner.
Uh, that was my vote, and I, I think that pretty much fits into two. I, I just don't know that there's a great deal more that one.
Okay, great. And then let's talk about number eight. I will focus on the present and the future and use the past only as data for the present and the future.
I, I think that was one that I voted. I, I'll tell you, um, for, for me, I haven't seen too much of this over the, over my tenure as a, a, a part of the council. I, I think I've seen some of it, but I don't see it as a real critical discussion right now because we are, we are, we are focused in the future and where we're going, and that's where policy comes. And I don't think that we have time or the resources to go and where we've been other than learning from it from a data standpoint, but not to really get caught up in the past. It has to be forward-thinking, and it'll take us, take us to my, my quote from Stephen Covey, begin with the end in mind. You know, he used the example that if you put a ladder up on the wrong wall, you may make progress. But if it's a wrong wall, it's not going to be the right progress. Or the example of you can take a dull saw and and spend all day trying to cut down a tree, or you can take some time out and sharpen that saw, and you can get the tree done very, very much quicker, much more quickly. And so when I look at this, I just think that having, you know, focusing on the, the present and the future is the thing that's going to get us where we need to go.
Great. Great. Any other conversation about this one? Okay, let's uh, go, whoops. Okay, let's talk about number 10. I will not blame others for situations that I have an opportunity to resolve.
That was mine. Um, I just liked it because I felt like it was the one, you know, the, the rest of these kind of have a sound like I've seen a problem and I want to fix it. This one sounds more like, um, I'm gonna a- address my own issues. I don't know how to, how to put it, but it seems more like it's aimed inward rather than outward, where the rest seem more like they're aimed outward. If that makes any sense.
Yeah.
And so I, I have a tendency to be kind of introspective, so I liked it. Um, but it doesn't have to s- stay.
All right, let's see what else we have here. And I, go ahead and highlight that in red. Okay, oh, I um, missed this one that has, oh, no, we did not, no discussion on this one, right? No discussion, so we didn't miss it. And let's talk about the one that you added, Chris. I will endeavor to view all decisions, actions, and comments through the lens of best possible motive. Why don't you start us off? And then let's get some other discussion around your thoughts there.
Well, I think often, if we're not careful, um, at least for me, I, I, I will, because I have a natural, naturally am a critic, that person that Theodore Roosevelt warned about. Um, and I think, um, if we're not careful, we'll be looking at things and hearing. And I think if we're not careful, we'll be looking at things and hearing things from the worst possible instead of the best possible viewpoint. And that can lead to some serious misunderstandings, difficulties, quickly going to personal rather than staying on policy. If we assume the best motives, then things work a whole lot smoother and better.
Great. So, so. So any comment, additional comments on that, those thoughts shared by Chris? Okay. All right, thank you, Chris. I don't see any additional com, comments or thoughts on that. So it looks like we had discussion on all of the ones that were voted for. So the next step is for us to, unless there's more discussion, for us to have a revote. That revote will determine what ones we carry forward to fine-tune, which will be another exercise. We don't do that tonight, tonight. So I'm going to give you guys, let's, I'm going to read through the ones that we have selected that we talked about. Number one, I will individually support the collective decision-making of the council. If I disagree with the decision made by the council, I will exercise my convictions without personalizing the issue and without eroding the collective reputation of the council. Once the decision is made, I will respect that decision. I will respect other members of the council, even if we disagree philosophically by articulating my view, listening openly to their perspectives and rationale, sharing my position and intended actions with the council in a timely manner. Number three did not get any votes, so we're not even going to look at that one. We're not even going to consider that one for a vote. Number four also did not get any votes, so we're not going to look at that one for a vote. I will say what I mean with no underlying messages in a positive manner. Do you want to take this off, Kelly, since you said it fits in two, or you want to leave it on there?
Yeah, let's just not bother with it.
Okay, let's take that one off. Because Kelly took it off. Number six, I will not personalize issues or decisions. Number seven, if I have a concern or issue with another council member or mayor, I will go to that person first and in a positive, private and timely manner and share that concern. I will present my feelings and how those feelings affect me. Number eight, I will focus on the present and the future and use the past only as data for the present and the future. I'm going to take this one off because nobody voted for it. Number 10, I will not blame others for situations that I have an opportunity to resolve.
Go ahead and take it off.
Oh, okay.
I'm the only one who voted for it.
And did you miss number nine?
Oh, I, nobody voted for that one, so I took it off, yeah. So the only ones that you guys will vote on will be the ones that are in black still. I will recognize that the council's role is to set policy and not to be administrators. Number 11, number 12, I'm going to take off because nobody voted for that one. Number 13, I will engage in a robust dialogue with the community in a constructive and inclusive manner. Number 14, I will follow the intention and law concerning doing council business outside of council meetings. And number 15, I will endeavor to view all decisions, actions and comments through the lens of best possible motive. So I'm going to give you a few minutes, why don't you let me know when you're ready. I have down here a revote while you guys are thinking through what you're going to vote for. Oh, go ahead, Remy.
So, you know, mathematically, the way that you will get to the most agree, the most agreeable five is through the ranking system you've already started. So if you took, I mean, I'm, I, it's, this is your, this is your system, so I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'll just make my point and what else you want to do with that, but if anything. But if you were to pull out the highest ranking ones, and, and then the next highest ranking ones and see how many we have total, and I'm sorry, I was trying to do it, but the screen's, there's so much movement.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to delete the ones out of the next, down there. I'll stop the screen from moving. Go ahead.
If, if you were to, if you were to just pull those, you know, everything that earned a four, right, because that was the most votes any, any of them got, I believe, was four. So if you were to pull all the fours and then pull all the threes, and if you needed to have further, like if there were so many fours and so many threes that you went beyond your five, then, then perhaps entertain some other kind of vote, but otherwise, the fours that are already there and then the threes would naturally be the ones that would fit best within the council.
The only, yes, and I totally agree with you. The only reason that we have a revote is because some of the discussion might have changed votes. So this is votes that happened before we internalized the thoughts of others. But that being said, if you guys want to go the direction of just using these votes, we can do that and rank them based on what votes happened before we got to the table, if we think that that represents what we still think. Now, the, the only reason I brought in a revote was so people could consider what was brought up and they might decide to change what they decided was a final vote for them.
Yeah, just out of counting them up, I mean, we have six, so.
Okay, if you guys think those are the six, let's read the, let me do the top six.
Maybe the question would be, has anybody changed their mind? Maybe we should ask that.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody?
Also, what's the, what's the, can you remind me, what's the fate of the furious six or whatever we're doing?
So we're going to, we want to choose five to seven, and then we're going to have an exercise where we can refine the language. So, and this will be where you guys can contribute so that we can refine the language to make sure it reflects exactly the way we want to be guiding our, our work together.
Copy that. And then for reference, have we all, are we all, has everyone signed onto this, or are we still at a point where not everyone's signed onto this agreement? And is that what this is leading to?
Let's talk about that. Yeah, let, I, I, let's talk about that. Has, is everybody in agreement to, to doing this and then coming, refining the language, having this as our big five to seven ideas out of this exercise? And then, okay, Sal's a thumbs up. So, okay, Scott, Zach, Kelly, Chris, great. I can't see you, Remy, hold on.
Yeah, I think everybody, when we talked about this before, every one of us said it was just kind of a given that we need to have some sort of how we define respect.
Great, okay, great. So let's, let's look at, to, to Chris's point and to Remy's point, is, does anybody want a revote?
No, I think, whether we have six, I think we expand that and maybe when we reword some of this, that we could put a few together possibly.
Yeah, so let's, the, our top six then are one, two, these are out. Six is three. Okay, seven is four, eight is five.
No, eight's only got one vote, so it's not part.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So we take eight out as well. Wait, let me see to make sure. So this would be five, 11 would be five, 13 would be six, 14, seven.
It only got two, so I wasn't counting it. I just, everything with three to five votes.
Everything with three to five, so we'll take out everything with one. So everything with two. All right, I don't want to lose the great discussion though. All right, I'm going to gray out the ones. I probably shouldn't have deleted them because I don't want to lose that discussion.
And just, just to update everyone, I've had an opportunity to touch bases with Adam and he had something come up that wouldn't allow him to be a part of this discussion. We talked and he will go and listen to the recording of this so that he'll be up to speed when we get back together. He will be with us at seven o'clock though.
Okay, great. Okay, so are we in agreement then for a decision to move forward? One, two, three, four, five, that, those are our top five right there. If we go.
I can have six, I mean, you got.
You can, you five, it's five to seven, so.
Let's go with six.
Okay, I'm going to go back just so that we, I probably shouldn't delete any of this discussion. I'll just gray out.
Session was really excellent.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So let's go, one, two, these three obviously out, three is six, four is seven. Okay, so what we're doing, let's count how many if we do eight. Nine. All right. So we're taking out the ones that have one.
I would say so.
Yeah.
Because you, you don't have, you don't have any sense of a minority there or a majority, it's one person.
Yeah, and Chris already took this one out. He was okay with that. Okay, Scott, you're okay with taking this one out? I will focus on the present and future, right? So, so are we okay then with going forward with these ones? Taking this one, you already chose to take this one out? I think we've narrowed it down pretty well by going with the ranking order like Remy suggested. We took a number of them out. Okay, Sal's a thumbs up. So what we would do next, Zach, Kelly, you're okay with carrying these forward? Scott, you're okay? Chris, how do you feel about that? Yeah? Okay. And Remy, are you okay with carrying these forward, all but the one votes?
Indeed.
Okay. Okay, so the next step, it's 6:53, the next step is we will create a homework assignment for you, it won't be in a meeting, to, to propose any language changes that you would like to, would like to make. And then the advisory team is going to come up, collecting all of that input from you guys, come up with a proposed revised language, if there is any, from your collective input, and then you guys can have a further discussion and approval of the new operating agreement. And we'll talk about next steps after that. So any other thoughts, parting thoughts after the discussion? Any other questions about the next steps or concerns?
A parting thought is, I'm giving it a nine and a half tonight.
Oh, we can do ratings! Thank you, Mr. Mayor! I, we haven't been doing ratings here, okay? Meeting ratings, go ahead, nine and a half, Scott. Okay, one to 10. How would you rate this meeting? Nine and a half from Scott.
Oh, I'd give it a nine and a half.
I will also. Okay, great.
10.
Oh, thank you, Zach. Okay. And Zach is a 10?
Because I actually, I like, I like you, Wendy, I thought you did a great job. Other people are beating a little hard on you.
Thank you, Zach. But it's not about me, Zach, it's about you guys.
Yeah, Zach, that's putting the rest of us all under the bus if we don't come in at 10 now.
Okay, Chris and Sal, please don't feel any pressure to give a high score. It is not.
I don't, I'm coming in low. I, I'd give it a seven.
Okay. Now, anything, yeah, give us a feedback on what we could have done to make it a 10.
The reason why I'm giving it a seven is I'm disappointed that among six counselors, not one of them changed their mind.
You have to remember, some of us have seen these a long time.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, Sal, you want to give us some feedback on the meeting? Do we still have you, Sal?
And I guess I should have said among seven people, because the mayor was part of that, not just the six counselors, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
But Adam was gone, so you were right, Chris.
Oh, good, okay, thank you.
Five counselors and the mayor.
Thank you, I just didn't want to slight the mayor.
Okay, Sal, are you still there? Looks like we're going to miss his rating.
Can you guys hear me at all?
I can hear you now.
God, I've been, I've been sitting here fumbling with my, my ear jack, trying to get a word in. Yeah, no, I, I gave it a, a high rating too, I'd give it a 10. I really enjoyed listening to everybody's comments.
Great. Great, so Mr. Mayor, I'm going to hand it back to you and we will have follow-up from this. Thank you so much, I, the conversation was amazing and I'm really, I feel honored to be a part of such a great process. You guys are, have some amazing ideas and I think that you're really coming together in how you're sharing them, so thank you.
Thank you, Wendy, and again, I, I'm just amazed at how open and the discussions and where these discussions are leading us, even though we maybe didn't change any votes, I think we got a lot of different perspectives and I think we know one another even better after tonight's meeting. So again, thanks, everyone. Let's go ahead and we'll dismiss our level 10 this evening and jump over to the Zoom link for council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night, have a great council meeting.
In a minute. I promise to tell you what we got hiring for his birthday and it's a Lego, if you don't tell him.
Oh, I want to hear.
Actually, it's my, my folks, they got him this, this Voyager space shuttle on, it's on the trailer.
Nice, very cool.
They are looking forward to it. They're looking forward to helping build it.
That's super exciting.
When Tyrone's birthday, Zach?
August 9th. We were going to go to Crater Lake, because the resolution is to spend every one of his birthdays in a national park. And he apparently doesn't hate that tradition, but.
Is the fire?
Oh, darn you in reality, I better go look at that right now. Shoot, not too far away, it's going to be pretty smoky.
Yep.
Apparently the.
Oh, you're right, buddy.
We're all right, Zach. We're going to make it better. We're going to be there the following weekend, August 13th, 14th. We're gonna be there by the weekend, August 13th, 14th, 15th. Oh, sweet.
Uh, it is gonna go. It is 7 o'clock, everyone. And so, I'm gonna welcome everyone to the July 27th, 2021 City Council. And I will call on Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Gary.
Here.
Counselor Garben.
Here.
Counselor Minky.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor President Dropkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia, for that. Let's go ahead and we will give the pledge of allegiance. I will lead that tonight. I haven't done that for a while. So, go ahead. We'll wait for the flag and.
Who did you?
There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for participating in that. The next item on our agenda this evening is comments from community members. I know we've received some public comment already this evening in the written form. We've received from Mark Davis and Tynan Pierce. And so those are part of the record already. This is a time for anyone to speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will give each participant three minutes to address to the council. Again, this is comments from the community, and so it's not a two-way dialogue. You'll just come to the council. If you have let Claudia know that you want to speak, she has your name. If, then we'll go through those that would like to speak. Let me share, usually, this is out of protocol, but I do want to share one comment before we get started this evening. Members of the community tonight may provide public comment concerning Jacob Miller and his RV located on property under the city's temporary camping program. The issue receives, has received a lot of comments on social media over the weekend. Today, the city met with Mr. Miller and the property owner, and we should have resolution and a draft plan by the end of the day, the business day today. All involved left the meeting in general agreements with the steps to move forward. I would like to call on our, on our planning director, Heather Richards, just to give us an update status on this. Before we take comments, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of what's transpired today so that we, we can understand that as we take testimony. So, Heather?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, we have been in dialogue with the property owners since Friday, and the Millers as well. Jacob and I had a chance to talk yesterday and again today, and we all met together to work on solutions and a game plan for moving forward. I think everyone at this point in time is comfortable with what that resolution and solutions are, and will be working as a team towards win-win situations.
Thank you, Heather, and thank those that were a part of that, Amanda and Heather, and Jeff was a part of that. Well, with that being said, Claudia, do we have anyone signed up for comments this evening?
Yes, we'll start with Tynan Pierce on Zoom.
Thank you. Tynan, it's good to, it's good to see you. We received your, your letter, and we've read that in, we've received that as testimony already. Go ahead.
Okay, is there, there's no video tonight? Oh, no, hold on, hold on. Sorry, this is going slower. Okay, there it is. Think we'd have this Zoom thing figured out by now, but maybe not so much. All right, so you got the written one. I think just sometimes because of three minutes, it's nice to have the written logged into the testimony, but also just to follow up and illuminate some of those points further. Really heartening to hear that the city was able to work quickly with the Millers and the property owners to work towards a resolution that could work for everybody involved. I think that's a great example of how you all are able to be nimble and quick in a way that maybe larger cities and municipalities are not able to. And that's a strength that I think can really be leaned on as you move forward into this year and to the next year. And obviously, we, we've, we've seen this even just last week, as I laid out in the email, that y'all were able to establish a state of emergency for the, the public waste disposal. And I think these things are really important, and we can continue to strive to bring that same sort of sense of urgency to adapting and dealing with these other challenges that we've laid out. I would love to hear either in written or if someone could get back to me whether or not some of these ordinances that we have already talked about last, last meeting and this one, if they are being addressed in either the Affordable Housing Council or in the DEI Committee. That would be really great to understand what the process is to make sure those are getting addressed. I know that at the beginning of the year, you already had as one of your kind of like internal mandates to look through code and compliance issues to make sure that discriminatory language and repressive language could be altered. And I think that just as these times are showing, like, we need to come with a sense of urgency to all of these situations. And we talked about, you know, the CRE situation, CRU, the one that McMinnville PD set up, talking about livability. I think we really need to expand the concept of livability, because, you know, people like Chris Bean, people like the Millers, their sense of livability might look different to somebody than, you know, somebody who's living in a house. And at the same time, I know that myself and my wife, we own a house here in McMinnville, and it's gone up 75% in value. And I don't know if I would qualify to buy my own house now. My income hasn't gone up 75%. You know, so that's a pretty powerful thing. I saw recently that one-bedroom apartments are renting for $850 a month. That's Portland prices. And so, these are issues that are gonna have to continue to be dealt with with creativity. I did, you know, add in HB 2423 and SB 391. And those are really great opportunities to look at these tiny house models and see if those could be utilized more in our city and, and again, have creativity with code. I really think that a lot of you are showing that you're committed to these issues, and I just really want to see more of the urgency. A lot of these people, they don't have somewhere to go. And I understand that funding is an issue, but with the ARP money on the table, perhaps there's a time to really make it happen now. You know, a lot of these people, they can't wait for some new solution coming down the pipe. I mean, a lot of these things are only gonna get worse. Income disparities continue to get worse. Access to affordable housing just continues to get worse. Are you waving at me, Scott? You give me a five, five second?
Five seconds.
Five seconds, cool. I didn't know if that was five minutes. So, yeah, just give me longer, because you love hearing me talk. I know it. Appreciate it. So, overall, that's my main things that I want to make sure we get back to. Hopefully with the ARP money, we'll see some of these issues, issues addressed really quickly. But again, thanks to the, I just wanted to commend you all for working quickly to work with the Millers. That's, that's very heartening.
Thank you so much for your comments. Claudia, next?
I just did want to remind everyone that I did send out an email from Tynan Pierce that will be entered into the record and an email from Mark Davis that will be entered into the record. And next, we have Jacob Miller.
Jacob?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Thank you for hearing me today, and I, I thank you for getting the opportunity to get together with Heather quickly and come to a resolution. I'm looking forward to looking at what comes across by the end of the day. But on another note, one thing that I would, or something I'd like to speak about is the enforcement side of things and looking forward to a different model. You know, I, the crime response unit might be good for some things, but I think, you know, we could negate some liabilities and some damages to people by putting together a more diverse unit of people that can respond with resources first. And not just like go to this place and sign up, but actually have a plug-in to those resources and then be able to notify law enforcement if there actually is available resources for that person. So they know about enforcement on that person or taking that person's property or anything like that. I think that we could get to a place where we're actually using some of the wisdom and knowledge that we have and some of the opinions that have come down and being mindful with the application, mindful of the people that we're working on, mindful of the situations, and, you know, negating it with, with more care. I, I do appreciate the care that was taken the past few days. It was a little bit stressful, but I also think of things like, you know, Chris Bean, and he's waiting to go to court, waiting for his stuff to get back, you know, still trying to work things out, you know. And think about if any of that type of stuff happens again, or if, if we could just negate that happening again by putting together something a little bit more diverse, you know, maybe some males and females. You know, you never know who you're gonna be running into, people with different skill sets in the background. It might even be cheaper than what it costs for five police officers to do livability or visibility issues or whatever. But I, I wanted to throw that out there. It was on my heart today to, to bring that up and, and, and just try to open that dialogue and say, hey, I'm open to have it if people would like to talk. I've got some ideas. I'd like to share. So, thank you for your opportunity to, this opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope to possibly be hearing back on maybe some of those, what that looks like in some of those committees, what you're looking like with enforceability and other options besides just police. Maybe that being a secondary, you know, after finding out if there's a place, after finding out if, if they've attempted to get into some sort of compliance first. So it could be a great idea. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't write anything up. I just figured I'd come in and free-flow it and share it with you guys and hope to, as it didn't fall upon deaf ears. Blessings to you guys. Good evening.
Thank you, Jacob. Claudia, next?
Next, we have Malisha Pierce on Zoom.
Malisha, welcome.
Hi, it's Nishow, actually. Sorry. That's a tricky name.
Excuse me?
No worries, no worries. I'm Mish, Dr. Pierce, fine. It's, I just wanted to say thank you, council, for letting me speak. But with the Millers situation, and I can't say I have any sort of, like, knowing insight into it, but I find it unfortunate that it takes a big Facebook, like, carfunkel to get attention drawn to a family that has been living peacefully in our neighborhood for quite some time. And then coincidentally, is come under fire after speaking out in city council because their friend had their housing removed. And so, one, I find the timing of the police very unfortunate, and I also find that it's, I mean, maybe the Millers wouldn't think of this situation as having privilege, but it always comes down to privilege. It's like, they have privilege of people, like, putting a spotlight on their story. And that enabled them to have city council working for them to find a solution. And how many people don't have city council finding a solution for them? Because they are, like, maybe troubling with drugs. Maybe they don't get the, the benefit of the doubt as people who are like, we, you know, have jobs, are sober, but, but all people deserve to exist. And so I really just want to advocate that we change these city ordinances so that we can allow people to be people, humans to be humans. And, and honestly, just get down to the real business of what we need to be doing right now, which is working on climate change, working on our future. Instead of, like, policing individuals for just trying to get by in a world that has made it impossible to get by without constant struggle and stress. We are so lucky to be here in these positions with these beautiful clothes on our backs and these computers in front of our faces. What a privilege, and I feel so fortunate to be in that place. I do not take it for granted ever, and I would like to think that we can support all of those who do not have this privilege. And so, if we can please just let it go and let them exist, and it is not their fault that they're on the street. And so, we just let people be people. We have to change these ordinances, and we can do it, and we can do it quickly. Because we know that with the, the garbage, we were able to change ordinances quickly to make sure that we could have the garbage situation changed. We can do it with many other things that we've seen. So let's do it with homelessness. Let's do it with camping, and let's let people be people. So, that's my comment. I can't hear you.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Uh-huh, thank you. Claudia, next?
I have Deborah here in City Council or Civic Center who will be speaking.
Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you, City Council members. I appreciate your time. I've not done this before, so I'm nervous. I wrote a four-page letter and don't have my reading glasses with me because I didn't realize the situation that I would be here. And so, you will all get copies of this letter. And what this letter is, is addressing the need for either a tent city or tiny home village for the homeless, given the increasing situation here in McMinnville. I feel that neighbors that are having issues with the homeless are, would be more than willing to come together to assist with this project. And resources can be provided for rehabilitation for people to return to the workforce, given a temporary solution of, of, of having a home for six months to a year in order to secure jobs and follow other homeless programs that have tent cities such as Medford, Eugene, and Portland. So I will leave copies of about 12 letters for you to review, and hopefully on a coming meeting, we can address this and come to a, a solution that works for everybody around this. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Next, we have Lisa Nice.
Alicia?
Hi. I just wanted to make a comment about, um, in regards to, like, making a resolution to the Millers and, um, and all, a lot of the, you know, like, the homeless community right now, I mean, most of them are at the park, most of them are, I mean, there's some that are, you know, doing, that choose not to do other things, you know, like, go to the shelter that are available. There's not much of a shelter available, and that makes it hard. So people are getting more tickets and more fines and jail time because there's nowhere for them to go. And, I mean, I mean, so like, sometimes it's like, like treatment facilities, some kind of, some longer-term shelter or something should be in place so that people aren't spending time behind bars just because they're, they're outside, because there isn't a seven-day shelter right now in effect for everybody, or everybody that's able to be there, you know. And I understand that, I mean, like, right now it's two days a week and you have to be clean and sober, or the 30-day program, and obviously that's clean and sober, but not everybody's gonna, falls under those guidelines. You know, and it just makes it hard for them now, and knowing that, were they gonna sleep every night and see them, and, you know, seeing them a couple days later on the jail roster, and saying that they got tickets for sleeping here or there, not knowing where you can sleep every night and wake up the next day and, and not have, you know, not have to stress that you're going to, you know, the cops are gonna wake you up at seven, or 6 o'clock in the morning. You know, it's just, there's nowhere safe for this. I mean, pretty much in Yarmulke County, that's safe, that you're not gonna be harassed for the most part. I mean, it's really hard to judge where you can and can't be. I mean, I hear about it every day, and it just, it makes me sad that, you know, I hear every day that there's several, you know, homeless community members. I, I worked at the mission previously, and, you know, I've seen what happened, I mean, where it's gone and where it hasn't gone, you know, we're back and forth, and things haven't progressed very much housing-wise or shelter-wise since then. I mean, so it, it makes it a very difficult situation. I mean, I'm homeless. I'm couch-surfing. I stay at the shelter Tuesdays and Wednesday nights with, I mean, the ones that choose to go in. Yeah, but some of them won't go in for whatever reason. I mean, obviously, we can't make them. But if there was maybe a little bit more of an opportunity, a different, I don't know. I understand the clean and sober part, but, but it would stop more people, I mean, less jail time. Our jail wouldn't be full of people trespassing because, for sleeping or whatever if we, there was more shelter available for our community, or something, something more presentable at least, you know, I mean, something. Because right now, I mean, I mean, previous, I mean, not long ago, I mean, we've, we had homeless people that were hurt in their sleep, you know, and, and we, I mean, they don't need to fear that, you know, sleeping outside for one night, and who knows if something's gonna happen, you know, and that's, that's what I fear. I don't want to see any, I don't want to see any more people get hurt, and if we can try. I mean, I just, it's just a concern.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Next, we have Richard Henricks.
Welcome.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome, gentlemen. Exactly what are we addressing today? The homeless situation again?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking, let me think a little bit, sir. To me, it has been getting out of hand. I mean, yeah, some people have a situation where they become homeless. It's not because they chose to be, because they are. And the welcome committee from McMinnville has not been very pleasant. Just for me to go to work, find a place to sleep at night, which most of the time is where I'm totally exhausted, and I lay in a spot where McMinnville Police has told me I could sleep for the night between the sidewalk and the street, and then I got a ticket for it, too, the next day from a different officer for being there. There needs to be more communication, there needs to be more feelings. I myself am an engineer, a contractor, and I can build things. I ended up here, long story, but I know these people, I do not like to see people homeless on the streets, but I do not judge them because they're homeless. I want to help people, and I wish the city of McMinnville, excuse me, would get their stuff together instead of writing us 20,000 tickets and sending us to court, sending us to jail for sleeping on the streets, the ones that are not creating any problems. All we want to do is just sleep, and then get up and go about our business and try to improve our lives. But we find it very difficult because the housing is very low because of so-called We're just asking for a little bit of cooperation, not so many tickets, not so many, get up two o'clock in the morning, you have to move because you can't be here, and where they told us we could be. We got to make a decision. Last city council meeting I was in, he said, yes, we'll look into it. I've seen nothing, nothing done. I mean, they closed down Champion Team, said we'd have a place, they disagreed with that. I mean, I know you guys do not like homeless people around the streets because it looks bad for the wine country. It's, you're not gonna, you're not gonna escape it. It's going to be everywhere. You can push us out, you can push us, I don't know, I've never been homeless in my life until I came to McMinnville. We got to figure something else, guys. Okay, my time's up?
Your time's up. Thank you so very much.
Next, we have Amy Gillette.
Amy?
Hi. To the City Council members of McMinnville and esteemed guests, I pray before writing this that I be given the appropriate words to convey accurately the needs of the homeless in this city from my perspective and after many conversation with those here now. How does one reach the hearts and minds that will bring about change for this growing population of the homeless that is occurring for a variety of circumstances? Private citizens that are here, I also understand your frustration, anger, and anxiety given the current situation. So I seek to persuade you of the council and private citizens to believe there is a good outcome for all involved. We can follow examples already employed in other cities dealing with similar issues. We can learn from their mistakes and increase our potential for long-term success. Currently, basic human rights are being denied and the ability for those homeless to access fully and as needed restrooms, water, and hygiene to preserve one's dignity. Our proposal below is a dream to be realized and believed possible. McMinnville will be recognized for treating those in dire circumstances humanely and with respect deserved of human beings. The success of this venture will be measured by the return of many residents to the workforce and to be self-sustaining. From what I have observed, much time and resources are spent on part of the police rescue squad, mental health agencies, and hospital in relationship to the homeless population. What we propose below will assist in these areas and free up these resources in large part. We would like to have a tent city and/or a tiny home village for rehabilitation of the homeless person's current situation. Persons that are accepted as residents after screening process, the signing of drawn-up agreement to be drafted, needs to identify to return to workplace while will reside there for a period of six months to one year once gainfully employed. This period of time will allow them to save up for their future needs prior to leaving. A gainful employment of some form will be required unless for good reason this cannot occur. Those persons will be assisted, dependent on their needs to be addressed, and time to stay will be flexible here. Those in the community of McMinnville, I feel, will be enthusiastic in assisting in these measures to free up their neighborhoods and do a good deed. My conversations with some residents shows they have good hearts, but dealing daily with homeless issues that occur has left them bitter and resentful. They do not know the backstories often of those they feel should just go get a job, not fully understanding what they are suggesting, and one cannot even become presentable to find and keep employment. My statements and requests noted below are not meant to be presumptuous to those reading. I firmly believe one must act as if the approval has already been given. I also speak on behalf of many and relate, as we have agreed in conversation on these points or ideas. This, let's call it, retreat site, will be self-governed and managers of site voted, and once the community has been selected, that will initiate this. The homeless population-
Amy?
Yes?
We've used our three minutes. If you could give a copy to Claudia, we could get that full text to the council.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for your thoughts.
By the way, I have two jobs, by the way. I still can't afford McMinnville.
Next, we have Raymond Berry.
Welcome, Raymond.
Thank you, City Council. This is my first time being here. I was homeless at one time. I know how these guys are living. I want to see them in better circumstances. I want to, I want them to have a home like I do, where they can pay their bills, their rent, their lights, and anything else they have. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, that's all the public comment we have.
Thank you, Claudia, and thank you, public, for testifying before us. That will take us to our joint McMinnville City Council and McMinnville Budget Committee meeting, and so I will call this joint meeting to order and ask Claudia to do a roll call. Claudia?
Committee member Hart?
Here.
Committee member Hofstadter?
Here.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Present.
Committee member Seiler?
Here.
Councilor Peralta?
Here.
Committee member Phoenix?
Here.
Councilor Minky?
Here.
Committee member Harmon Ferry? Council president Drapkin?
Here.
Committee member Maxfield?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Thank you, Claudia, and welcome to the Budget Committee that are with us this evening. At this point, I will turn our discussion over to our Finance Director, and we'll talk about resources and sustainable city services and have a discussion on that. There is a, in our packet, there is a two-page that talks a little bit about resources. And so, Jennifer, welcome, and we'll turn it over to you.
Great, great. Good evening, everyone. Glad so many folks were able to make it again. So our thinking is to kind of start up where we left off at the work session on the 13th, a couple weeks back, and look at, look in more depth, talk about all the wide variety of resource options with a goal to getting feedback from the group about which ones we should, staff should take the time to do additional research in and bring back to you as real possibilities for resource options that you might want to consider for the city. So I don't know if, Jeff, do you, do you have any thoughts about framing this up in any way, or want to add to what we're hoping to accomplish tonight?
Nothing specific. We did share the Q and A responses that we had from several members. Jennifer included that in your packet. We'll endeavor to start about the time we started speed-reading slides to you last time we were together, and with that, I'll just thank Jennifer for her time and commitment, and the executive team for the rest of the preparation that we've done over the last couple of weeks.
All right, well, thanks for that. So I think what I was hoping to do is be able to share my screen and start back up with the slides. So let me see if I've got the power. Can you all see the resource options to study slide?
Yes, Jennifer, it's come up on the screen.
Oh, awesome, great. So I, just in my view, I'll be concentrating on the slides, so I think it worked okay last time, that if folks have questions, just to go ahead and call them out while we're, while we're talking. So, so we're going to look at five slides that have different types of resources available to the city. So the first couple are property tax options, special districts, which the fire, fire district is, oh goodness, it's happening to me again. So any discussion on the property tax?
Jennifer, I have a question, or I have a suggestion on this one. I realized last time that you had a slide, Slide 15, that discussed the amount of compression that the McMinnville would experience, and I think it'd be really nice if you could bring up that slide and show it to us, so everybody has kind of an understanding of how much compression we have under government versus, you know, if we did decide to do a levy or decide to do a district. And this is the slide, and it looks, when I glance at it, it looks like we've got about $2.25 of compression available, or ability before we have compression under the governmental heading.
Yeah, that would be correct. So these are limits imposed by Measure Five back from the mid-'90s. So government has a maximum of $10 per 100 for property tax, and currently, we're running at just over $7.75.
And where is the fire district potentially? I know we don't know the numbers, but, you know, depending on where that comes in, that will just, that may chew the rest of that delta up, right? And then we're out of ceiling for, for those type of things.
Correct. Correct.
I think the number-
I want to-
-has been bandied about.
Well, sorry, sorry, say that again, Kelly, what has been bandied about?
$2 has been bandied about as a likely amount that we would use for the fire district. I mean, if we go less than that, we're not, they're not going to be able to support themselves for 10 years. We need some, you know, they have to have a legitimate amount to go forward with it. Now, others may disagree. Jeff may have some thoughts on this, too.
So to that point in particular, the consultant reviewed two different financing options. One was a tax base of $1.50 per thousand of assessed value, the other was $2 per thousand of assessed value. Under the first scenario, a new district would need to seek an operating levy to maintain their, maintain balanced budget sometime three to five years after the district was established, and a $2 per thousand tax base would give the district probably closer to 10 years before they'd have to contemplate a new revenue source.
Thank you, Jeff. Sal, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. First, the two scenarios that we have are $1.50 and $2. Remind me again, what is the current, sorry, what is the current levy amount that we have? And then I have a follow-up question.
Well, we don't have a levy right now that's-
Sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. What's the assessment for fire currently?
So right now, the fire department, I think, consumes just under $1.60 per thousand of discretionary general fund dollars. I'll rely on Jennifer for a course correction there, but I think that's about the number.
So, so the, the amount that we're talking about going up for $1.50 would be in addition to the, the amount that we're currently spending? It replaces what we're currently spending, but it would be, would it be $1.50 in addition to that, or would it be?
So the council has to make that decision sometime down the road. The primary, one of the primary reasons we're looking at a district is to create a sustainable financial model for the fire service.
I understand that.
So my, I mean, I just, I'll answer your question, that the council has discretion on what to do with its current-
All I'm trying to get to, all I'm trying to get to is a difference number, Jeff. Can somebody give-
So the difference between, I mean, right now, that we haven't wrestled between the difference between our current levy authority and what the net new levy authority would be plus a district. We've only identified the amount for the district, and we haven't, we haven't made a recommendation and clearly no decision about whether that $2 is a net $2 increase or something less.
I'm sorry, I still don't feel like I have a clear answer. So is, is, you got two recommendations back from the consultant. Were those recommendations for $1.50 and eliminating what we're currently paying, or was it $1.50 or $2 in addition to what we're currently paying?
We didn't ask them to weigh in on the city's budget at all. All they did was evaluate the financial impact of the two varying levy amounts or tax base amounts for the new district.
Okay.
And so, so that's not something we've asked them to weigh in on.
Okay, I feel like I'm not getting any closer to the information I'm trying to get.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand your question, so try it again.
Jeff, I'll take a swing at it for Sal.
Thank you, Adam.
So Sal, currently, the fire department's operating out of the city's general fund, as you're aware, and if it goes to a fire district, it's going to create its own, its own tax rate, whether that's $1.50, $2, whatever it ends up being, and I think you grasped that, and what your question is, is what happens to the $1.50 that's currently in the general fund?
Thank you.
That's currently funding the city- That's currently funding the city fire department, and then the .99 that the city currently collects for the rural fire district.
Thank you, Adam.
What Jeff is trying to say is, we as council and policymakers haven't had that conversation yet, and that's a conversation that's going to come about. And it gives us opportunity to create a sustainable funding for the city, but that also means that the fire district would be in addition to what the current, what the city currently collects, if that's what we elect to do. So in Newburgh, when they went to Walton Valley, Walton Valley brought in their tax rate. The city of Newburgh elected to keep all the money. And then they saw a couple of councillors get re-elected because of it. So I think whatever we decide to do, there needs to be good discussion, public input, and we need to be transparent about what our objectives are and what the service level we're going to be because.
Very well said.
And I would just add, and I think Counselor Garvin got it entirely right. And one of the reasons we're going through the core services exercise is so that we can present to you and to the community what the, what the options would be for spending those freed-up resources should the council choose to do so. So essentially, it's sort of the value proposition in terms of the services that would be supported by the city's tax base, whether it remains at the same levy amount or a lesser amount at the council's discretion.
Here's the reason I was asking the question. Because I've heard in between the last session and this one concerns that this levy, or the, the, the moves that we're making with the fire staffing, whether it's an operating levy plus, you know, a, a bond as they go to districting, that that would eat up all of the, the full amount of the $10 that we're allowed to spend. And it, it's unclear to me whether that's true. Because if, if, if there's an assumption that we're increasing, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't think, I haven't heard anybody suggest that we're planning on going to like $3.50 or, you know, $3 or, or some significantly higher number than that that really would put a lot of pressure on the $10 number. So I'm trying to get a sense, Jennifer, of why we think that this is going to put that much pressure on the upper limit of the compression, which is what you said earlier, and that's what I was trying to get to.
Jennifer, do you want to answer that if you're?
Oh, yeah. Just, my assumption was based on you, you take the permanent rate that exists now, and if you chose to add another, if the, if the voting public chose to add another permanent rate, it would, it would be added. But there are, there are ways, and permanent really does mean permanent. So if the city didn't want to use its $5.02 of taxing authority, one of the options is the Budget Committee wouldn't levy the, the entire amount. So that's, I think that's how you would handle it.
And that's for a discussion at a later date as we're getting closer to the districting, and if that goes through by a, a vote of the people.
And the other thing that would be true is with a $2 addition to that, I, I don't know how much of those other levy amounts that are in the general government are operating levies versus tax bases. And that, you know, that is, there is a nuanced difference to that. But we would still, with a $2 fire district, be under the $10 per thousand. We would just be much closer to that time when there would be compression, and it would, there would be a limited opportunity for any of the taxing agencies to go to the voters for an additional operating levy of any significance.
Well, that, that's, that's what I was trying to understand, Jeff. Because it seems to me that if we're going from $1.50 to $2, it, it doesn't put that same kind of pressure that's been, been described. But if we're, if, and, and that's what was not clear to me. Were you, I mean, the way that it was being discussed, it sounded like $2 in addition to the rate that people are already paying, and that doesn't seem consistent with what my belief was about, about this, so.
Well, that's, that, that's, the point is that's to be determined by the city council. And I don't think you have the information to make that determination yet.
Well, I mean, I, I know that, I know that, like, at least in my mind, I have not, whether we've, whether we've made a determination about an exact dollar amount or anything like that. I, I certainly haven't been operating under the assumption that we're spending currently 40% of what we'll be spending in the future. And, and, you know, by my math, that, you know, if, if we were to add, say, $2, that the $1.50 that we're currently spending is about 40% of that, so. My purpose for bringing it up is I'm just really trying to calibrate realistic expectations so that I can kind of have a sense of, of how much revenue we're going to need to go get in other parts of this conversation.
And that's the purpose of these several meetings, to be, to be clear about that. So, so it is, it is the information that we'll be working through as you give us additional direction. And by the time we get to the end of the process, you'll have the full picture, and you can make some informed policy decisions about those levy amounts and about the, the city's tax base moving forward, and how, and about how you intend to spend those dollars, for sure.
And, and Sal, your point's very well taken. Because I think if, if, if we, if we go with the, the fire districting, and we have the ability within our own capacity to keep the taxing authority at 502, then some of these other places we're looking at are, we need to know, we need to know that because we'll have a lot of discussion where we may not, we may not have to go to those other places. Is that in line with what you were thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yes, pretty much, Mayor. I mean, I just, I just, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to calibrate my understanding of, of even, even a rough sense of, of, of what people have in mind with regard to, to the districting that we just discussed, based on some of the comments. But I appreciate your context, and I'll set that aside for now. Thank you.
Okay. Kelly, you have your hand raised?
Yes. The main reason I brought this up is so we at least had a feel for what this fire district would mean. You know, assuming we do not reduce our rate and we put this $2 as a new rate out, it, it makes a difference. But you have to consider how much the fire department costs us too at this point in time. Those funds would be freed up. Perhaps they would offset something that the city citizens would be very happy about. So, you know, it's, it's another way to look at it, too.
Okay, let's go back to Jennifer, so she can do her presentation and.
So, the, in terms of property tax, the, the two basic options are creating new districts, bringing new permanent rates onto the rolls. And then the, the second, the second thing that municipalities have the power to do is to take local option levies to, to the people for a vote. And those max out at five years. And these are different from bond levies. I don't know if you recall, over on the side, these non-limited, those are bond levies. So bond levies don't eat into the Measure Five limits. They're in addition to. So, so those are the options there. So is there, oh, I, I see Counselor Chenoweth, you have a question?
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry. This goes back to the, kind of the pattern of the questions I was asking to begin with. And, and, and my, and my questions that I sent you were based around the assumption that we need more revenue, and, and trying to get to an understanding of what's happened over the last five years. I, I'm still perplexed a little bit as to how we got here. I, I, I look at the 2015, 2016, let's say, rev, well, 2015 revenues, based on what was in the, in, on, what's on the website. In 2016, 2015, we had $12 million that came in from property taxes. In 2020, we have $17 million that came in from property taxes. That's a $5 million difference. Over that timeframe, we have issued, you know, the new tax on, what is, whatever that tax is on sewage, as well as we've increased property, or the, the fees, both at the, the Planning Department and at the Building Department. So I'm, I'm a little perplexed with all the increased revenue that's coming in, with all the development that's happening out on the, on the northwest side of, of this, of the city, that's going to continue to bring increase in revenue. Why we still need another $2 million to pencil out? There seems to be a, a, a growing spending problem, not a growing income problem. And, and, and I didn't, I tried to aim those questions to, to, to deal with that, and I didn't really get answers that seemed to address that for me.
I, I just have a comment on the spending side. I mean, I, I think clearly the, the growth in the, the cost of, of fire and EMS services is a million bucks. It's half the shortfall. And that's not to do with anything that anybody on the council's done. It's not to do with any changes in programming or anything. It's just to do with increased costs and inadequate reimbursement rates and inadequacy or a failure to, you know, pass and sustain some things that we could have done to reduce the cost of fire and EMS. So that's half the shortfall. Then, you know, by my estimate, we had something like a $400,000 shortfall for KOB that we've been eating into from, out of the reserve fund, out of the KOB reserve for five years or something. And hopefully that got corrected, and that's a chunk of revenue. I think in general, when people talk about government spending, it's easy to look at the expenditure side. I don't think we're really doing that much different than we were in 2016, Chris. I think we're pretty much doing the same kind of services, but the services cost more. The cost of healthcare outpaces the 3%, you know, roughly increase that we get for that. We, the cost of PERS increases faster. We've got step increases for staff. So I don't think it's an issue where people are engaged in profligate spending so much as it is that the cost of maintaining a current service level budget, providing the same services that we always have, outpace the ability to finance it. So you take fire off of the books, and that's half of the amount that we have, the shortfall. And so then you have another $1 million to deal with. I think we've dealt with KOB, I hope. And so now we've got $600,000 left to, to meet the need. And then the question is, do we want to continue providing the same services for that $600,000 that we have to make up? Or do you want to cut services, or do we want to expand services in some areas? And I guess that's the, the point of this conversation. But that's my sense of, of, of the city budget.
And, and I totally get where you're coming from, Sal, but where I, where I find problems in, in just accepting that on face is we've had a $5 million increase over the last five years total in property tax income. We've had the increases in all of the different increases in our, in our Planning Department fees and in our, in our other taxes that have probably netted us close to $750,000 total. I'm guessing. I know it's about four something for the, for the franchise fee. I don't, 400 some odd thousand for the franchise fee, and the rest is hard to calculate because it depends on, 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 on what we're looking at. But $5 million is what we've had an increase, and we're still $2 million in the hole. That's $7 million. And, and the, the change to the Medicare reimbursement fees occurred in 2012. That's three years before that.
Well, I mean, but you'll recall that, that our staff has said that we've been spending at a shortfall for most of that period. So it's not like this is just a thing that suddenly happened.
No, it's been happening for a lot.
But, but, but to that point, Chris, I mean, I'll just, I mean, you know, let's assume that you're right. You know, which, which areas do you think, I mean, you've got the budgets, you've looked at both of them. Where do you think it's grown significantly in places where it should be cut? I mean, where, what, what have you identified besides fire, which I mentioned, and KOB, which was where the shortfall was?
Well, you know, go ahead, Council President, I'm sorry.
Thank you. May I jump in just for one second? I just want to address part of the conversation that you're having that I've heard come up a few times, which is regarding the planning and building fees. And, and one thing is that we were trying to get up to full cost recovery with those increases. So if you look at that as additional income, it's, it's really a skewed picture because essentially, the city had been subsidizing a lot of that, those dollars historically. And so where you have started to see those increases, it's really just to cover our cost. And I just wanted to add that into the conversation you, you're, you're having.
I, I get that, but that's, that's really just a matter of, 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 of a, of a numbers game. Because the bottom line is, is if we cover the cost of the Planning Department, then we're not pulling from the general fund, which means an increase in the general fund available for expenditures. So either way, we're, however you want to look at it, is more money to the, to us to use. And, and, and when we, we're, we're doing consistent patterns that are increasing our net bottom line of income, and we're outspending it, I have concerns. To Sal's point, I, 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 I take your point, and I, I take it, take it full, full value that, that, you know, if I'm going to make these comments, it'd be nice for me to come back and say, here's the cuts. But I, I, I'm concerned that when I start doing that, I'm getting into the administrative side. I don't want to do that.
Well, I just think it's important, Chris, that you not, you know, it's, it's important not to make those kind of generic statements like, we're engaging in spending. I feel like if you're going to make the claim that, that this is a spending problem, it's important to really identify where the problem is.
Well, I have to admit, I've, I've made it clear that I think the, the, the issue overall is in payroll. And I, and I think that we have, we have, we've seen a continued spike in payroll over the last five years.
Well, that, that, is that, is that, is that a spike in FTEs? Or is that a spike in, quote, I'm using the, I'm putting air quotes around the spike, which you can't see. But is that, is that an increase in FTEs? Or is that, is that simply the cost of doing business related to PERS and step increases and contracts that we have with our, with our professional staff?
Ultimately, my concern is that we are busy trying to compete at a level that is, like, we're trying to act like we're a, a larger-sized city than we are, and trying to compete at that level. And I think the, the end result of that has been an, an inflation in our budget. And I, I just, I just, and I'm not.
I would just say, if you want to, if you want to say that, identify where you want to cut. Because, because those kind of generalities, you know, it, it's just easy to say we need to cut. But it's hard to say, I'm going to cut that person or that position or this.
Right now, the Planning Department has doubled in the last three years. That's concerning to me. You know, that, that, just on the payroll side of it. In the meantime, we're not doing anything, haven't been doing near enough for the fire department. So I, I, I just, I, I, I mean, I don't, I really, I don't want to get to micromanaging this. I'm just saying, I look at the numbers, and I'm not the only one that looks at the numbers and sees this and says, and sees a consistent increase coming into our coffers with a consistent loss every year. That's concerning.
So Remy, you've got your hand up?
I do, Mr. Mayor, and I know that Counselor Gary had his up before mine, so let me give him the floor, and then I'll happily follow.
Zach, go ahead. Your, your hand blends with the wall behind you, so that's why I didn't see it.
It's all good. I was just going to take the time, if this was where we were kind of saying where we're at on, on our temperature of, of diving into revenue. I'm ready to get there. I think we've got, talked and heard a lot about really exciting, cool projects and programs we want to add to the city. I think we're, we're ready to start seeing models and, and understanding ways in which we could get back on track for maintenance programs and things like that, and endeavor to do bigger and better things. And I'm looking forward to, to getting into those and, and, and giving the staff direction on which, which revenue sources to explore. I think what would be helpful for me in that discussion, as I indicated in some of my questions, and hopefully it'll dovetail with this, and this is just the first part of the slides, but a sort of, $2 million is the answer to one of my questions, was the, was what it's going to take to get back to parity and, and continue to maintain at this level that got us to furloughs and, and things like that. And so I'd like to see models and, and understand rate structures for what happens if we raise $3 million, $4 million, $5 million in revenue, and does that mean we can stay ahead of, of mowing and, and take on new parks and take on open spaces and do more ambitious projects for a new McMinnville century? So that's, that's where I'm at as we head into these, these next slides, which is what I wanted to add in, and I'll defer my time to Remy. I don't know where everyone else is on revenue options.
Thank you, Zach. And so, Remy?
Thank you, and I'm very tempted to follow Counselor Gary's lead here and move the conversation forward. I was going to invite something that I have spoken about in the past. I was going to invite um something that I have uh spoken about in the past privately with the counselors, which is, you know, making sure that we're considering the uh a little bit more historical perspective on how we are, where we are, um, and what's happened over a number of decades with the budget, um, including hiring freezes um that had to be made up for and a number of other factors that um that I think are important to the conversation, um, but I also don't want to get bogged down. And so thank you for the, thank you for the moment to chime in.
Okay, thank you, uh uh Gr- uh Remy for those comments. Um, just to to keep us moving along, I mean, I think what we ought to do, I mean, we can stop and have discussion. Uh, but Jennifer, Jennifer, if you want to continue with your slides and get us to a point where we've got your information out, and then have the more in-depth conversation among council and budget committee members.
Okay, that would that would be great. So, um, and just process wise, I will be I will be keeping notes, just not on your screen, about kind of what what people's feelings are in terms of um the different options. So um, once we get to that portion of things. So in terms of income tax, there are a number of options um there. Um, would you all like to, do you want to talk talk about them one by one, or do you want me to just go through kind of the 30 plus, and then we'll go back and see which ones are most interesting? I guess I'm not sure what's the most effective process at this point.
Why why don't we do the review of the options out there, the 30, and then we can zero in on those that uh counselors and budget committee members would have a desire to move forward of understanding on?
Okay, great. So, um, so there's a payroll tax, which Eugene, I believe, is the inaugural municipality um to pursue that, and it's just one year old at this point. Um, personal income tax and um corporate activity tax or corporate income tax are, well, business licenses are used very widely, but um the personal income and the corporate activity tax are um fairly uncommon um in Oregon. The uh pay ratio, surtech, that's the CEO tax. Um, I I believe, let's see. Portland has a small CEO tax. Um, and the arts tax at Portland is essentially um a well, it's not even an income tax. It's just, it's a tax based, I believe, on your household. So those are the income tax based um options that are legal for municipalities to consider. Then um the sales and excise taxes that Oregon municipalities are using currently are um admissions or amusements taxes. Um, a motor vehicle, a local um gas tax, essentially, uh utility consumption taxes, um, a food or restaurant um tax, a motor vehicle, a, you know, a rental rental tax. And then you um you also can see retail, excuse me, sales taxes on particular goods. Um, then the these last three have, at this stage, I don't think any municipality in Oregon uses them, although they may actually be legal, um, sales commuter and a luxury tax. Um, I see Counselor Peralta.
Thank you. I I think, Zach, is that a hand up that you have, or is that just part of your? Got it. Okay. Uh, no, so the questions that I had on this slide, um, the the first, well, first one comment, are any of these taxes uh able to be um directed, meaning not not put towards the general fund, but directed towards specific spending? That's the first question.
I believe so, but I think that I would want to um work with Amanda to to vet that. I I believe council would have the authority to um to restrict that, how you so choose.
Okay. Uh, and then just one general comment. Um, the, we have an issue, and it's not just our issue, it's a statewide issue in Oregon uh with respect to the funding model for um our roads. And the the issue is that is increased uh uh fuel efficiency is happening and decreased uh uh driving is happening, that there's less money for um for those kinds of projects, since it's funded by a fuel tax. And so by way of brainstorming, I would suggest that that if if we were to want to do something to um improve our roads, that the local motor vehicle fuel tax would be something that we should consider by way of brainstorming.
I'm making note of that.
And then and then the the second comment or question that I had relates to the utility consumption tax. Um, I don't know if this is actually a tax or if this is under the correct heading. Um, but I've mentioned it a few times, um, just the uh fee in lieu of taxes that um that that the steel mill and air liquid have. I I think it would be good for us to do a rate review um to just see what what steel mills and 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 similar kinds of facilities are paying in other jurisdictions to see if if what what is happening here is consistent more or less than what was happening in those places.
Okay, got it.
Uh, Adam, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jennifer, I was curious, as we move through these, um, you know, if you've identified or if you're looking for us to get you like a top three or top five or whatever, um, what type of revenue each of them could generate, you know, so it's maybe if you went after one or two, you could close a gap versus going after 10 small things that get eaten up by implementation costs and administration and and things like that. Not that I'm opposed to employing more people at the city. I just want to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible if we are going for revenue.
Um, that makes sense. Um, Meredith, is your question related to this, or should I? Okay. Um, so other than just kind of using Eugene's very in-depth study kind of as a guide, I think there are a few heavy hitters um from their data that we can make some assumptions for, but I, we haven't um, we haven't gone in and done the study yet to see how much we might raise under the various ones. So, um, but I do think that's um, if if folks seem seem to prefer going after some or doing additional study on some ones that obviously would raise a lot of money um versus, you know, picking out six or a dozen of the smaller ones, I think that's for you all to decide. And um Jeff, you may have some thoughts, it looks like, on this question in particular.
Yeah, and that, just to clarify, Jennifer, I I mean, I definitely don't want you to waste your time
Right.
giving out revenue projections for every one of these. So I think we as the budget committee and and council should probably narrow the list down for you, but um I was just kind of more curious if some of these that are you're presenting only run the potential to generate, you know, 10 to $20,000, and if anybody else on this call from the budget committee or council wanted to just kind of ax that off as more busy work than anything that's really viable.
Jennifer? Yeah, I think I think those categories of items are um later on, more more these fees per service kind of items, but um, but Jeff? Uh, you're muted.
Oh, quickly, uh, Counselor Garvin or Gary has had his hand raised for quite some time.
So let's go to Jeff, let's go to Zach, and then Meredith, and then let's go with Kelly, and then with Remy. So and so we, as we work our way through the list, I I think there are a handful of these revenue sources that we think would generate a significant amount of money. Um, what we're trying to avoid is to spend a lot of time evaluating options that the council really doesn't have any interest in pursuing. And so that's why we're, and I know this is a sort of a painful exercise for you, but we would rather get down to, you know, 15 or 20 options for us to do a really deep dive on and and look at all of those factors. How much would it generate? Who are the payers? What would the impacts be on, you know, particular um um uh payers? Um, how much would it cost to administer those those kinds of things? Um, we'd rather not try to do that for, you know, 50 or 60 or 70 revenue options. We just don't have the capacity of an organization like like Eugene, and we can certainly identify the handful that we think are most likely to generate the largest net amounts as we work our way through the list. Thank you, Jeff. So then let's go up. Did I say Meredith, or did I say Zach next? Meredith, go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. My my hand's getting tired. Thanks. Uh, I I s- some of the comment I had earlier on was 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 uh hit by Adam in that, you know, part of, like I said, that question I had about seeing models to see what the numbers we need to hit, to know what each of these numbers will create, to put those two together to know. I may, I may be more appealed by one, and then I see that it's, you know, going to amount to a hill of beans, and it's like, well, that wasn't worth it. So 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 that was kind of what I was getting at with Adam. Um, and then the other one was kind of a process question about if this is the, if this is where we're going to start and is ranking or moving some of these forward or or not. I don't know how you want to start. If you wanted to go slide by slide, and we just give you the numbers that we are interested in off each slide, and the the top voters get in or or what? It was just kind of a process question. I I I'm struggling to see how we're going to move forward, or if it's just Jennifer takes notes and whatever makes it through, gets on the list, or what? So.
Uh, Jeff or Jennifer, you want to ask, answer that for Zach? Well, what I thought I heard from at least a couple of folks a few minutes ago is let's get through the whole list, and then go back and talk about areas where there might be some interest in either scratching it from the list or doing some additional study.
Got it. So clip through all of these and then go back to the beginning and read off the numbers.
Yeah, I think that's what we're intending to do.
I, I can grab that. Yep.
Okay, let's go up to Meredith and then down to Remy.
Sorry, that was what I was confused about too, because I was interested in one on the previous slide, but I was waiting to go through them all. So do you want me to wait till we go through them all?
Let's go ahead and do that, and then
Okay.
then we can have the discussion. And then, Remy, I see your hand went down.
Same, same.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move through this as quickly as we can, then we'll come back and narrow that list down and ask specific questions. Jennifer?
Okay, so moving on to the fees for service. So um there's the service fee, um, a a utility service fee, a business licenses, um, a construction excise tax is feasible. Um, having a parking tax or a benefit district, so um, or an improvement district, so similar to um the downtown association assessment. Um, uh, we could start charging technology fees on um on our various um fees and services that already exist. Um, in terms of things that we could
A clarifying question on that last one. I know we're going back to ranking, just just while we're on that, if I can ask a clarifying question. That service fee, is that where storm wa- like a stormwater fee would be?
Yeah, it, the utility service fee, well, actually, that's that's not on this list. Um, but it would be on the utility bill if we chose to begin raising funds for the sewer um service, you know, whenever that begins.
So so no- nothing you have on here would qualify as something like the stormwater fee? That would be something we would have to add if we're interested?
Yeah, it would, it would, it would be effect effectively a utility fee, but it would be a new one, right? Like a new franchise fee, I guess.
Okay.
Um, then there are
Jennifer, do you mind, just let me clarify. So um a stormwater revenue of some sort, like a wastewater fee or a water fee or an electrical fee, would be um limited to um supporting that utility. So uh resources like that, that don't have any direct application to the general fund, aren't currently on the list in large part. Um, it is important to pay attention to the potential need for a stormwater fee, because we now have uh requirement to meet new standards for stormwater on the Yam Hill River, actually technically the Willamette River, but through the Yam Hills discharge into the Willamette River. And we'll be going through uh facilities, planning, exercise on the possibility of creating a stormwater utility. That said, the stormwater utility fee, while it would not be available to directly support general fund activities, uh, right now, out of the street fund, we are paying for pretty substantial um care of our collection system under with with our street funds, which are allowed. Um, and we could create a lift for the street fund um by establishing a stormwater utility. So that is one of the areas where I think it's um, I think it's reasonable to expect that we're going to be having that conversation, but it's not general fund related directly. Now, when you look at, you know, surcharges on fees, then those are the kinds of um things that would generate money for the general fund or could be directed to specific activities um by the council. Um, and and would generally create a pretty substantial amount of revenue as well.
So maybe another way to say it would also be like funding sources for non-general fund programs, projects, endeavors that would provide relief to the general fund?
Either the general fund or other funds, I mean, the street
Or other funds. Okay, yeah.
For instance, we're doing street sweeping and street tree maintenance in the street fund right now. Um, those are eligible for stormwater costs. If you have a stormwater utility and identify those as uh legitimate costs for the stormwater, that would free up gas tax money, for lack of a better term, to be spent on other traditional street maintenance and construction activities.
Thank you. That that was, that was helpful. Thank you.
Let's go up to Chris. Chris?
I'm I'm good, thanks. Okay.
Jennifer?
So here's um am I still muted? No. Um, here's a sh- a short list of um things that we're doing currently that um we could take a a look at. Um, the transit room tax, the cost recovery, um, and how we approach that on various user fees, franchise fees, um, system development charges, and um liquor license fees. Um, my sense is that um these probably are among the kind of marginal lower dollar um type activities, but staff does have it already kind of in the work plan to be circling back and making sure that we're um executing on these currently existing resource um uh processes, you know, appropriately for our city. So Kelly?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm really having a lot of connection problems tonight. I, yeah, I I looked at these and when I went through them with the Eugene uh scope on them, uh, for the most part, none of these really raised uh any significant revenue. So I don't know that it's really a whole lot worth it to to look at those. Uh, one thing I was interested in, and I don't know if I lost my shot on this or whatever. I'm really interested in what Eugene did with the payroll tax. I find it interesting. They got shut down on so many different things, and then for whatever reason, this one went. I don't know if it was voted on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello? Can you? Okay. Um, so I just, uh, I think I'd really like you to look at the payroll tax and just see how difficult that would be to do for the city of McMenville. I don't know that we want to do it, but it looks like very advantageous as far as raising money in an incremental way over a number of years.
Okay, well, um, we'll go, we'll go, we'll circle back to that one, and that'll be on that first slide together when we identify the ones we'd like to pursue more. Just the very last thing is there is um not, it's not a new fee, but we do have um, we have this particular asset and strategy with the with wastewater in terms of um having a lot of cash on hand that is not earning, um, what it could be earning, but if it were to, um, invest in capital, um, projects of the cities, it could earn a little bit more and that would be a lower cost way to finance some of the things that we're having difficulty, um, keeping in the budget. So that's kind of, it's a non-fee option that I just, um, that might merit, uh, more discussion, um, of the group. So that's why that's included.
Um, it looks like Allison, you have your hands raised?
Uh, yes. So before we start the discussion on the individual options, I noticed that when Eugene, um, did their study in 2014, the very first thing they did was the Strategy Research Institute surveyed registered voters on their awareness of critical issues and their identification of the most pressing spending priorities, um, from their perspective. Is there, are there any plans in McMinville to survey registered voters, uh, on their awareness of critical issues facing the city and their priorities of what might be, um, you know, most valuable? Or are we just going to drive down these options and make decisions in the smaller group that we are?
Uh, I'll, I'll ask Jeff to address that. We've done, uh, citizen surveys up to a certain point and then we did the survey and all the good work on our, on our, uh, uh, strategic plan. So Jeff, if you could deal with those, because I think we have done critical services to the, to the community. It's been a few years. And then the strategic plan gave us some direction also.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that that sort of a polling is an option that's available. Uh, what we, uh, what we heard from, uh, this group, the first time we met was there was a keen interest in community outreach and engagement beyond just having these public meetings and having this group of fourteen people engaged. Um, and, and we talked about crafting those sort of public engagement and outreach tools once we had sort of a more sort of manageable list of issues, um, to present, including the presentation of the core services, which will come to you, uh, later in this process. So, um, I think polling is an option. Uh, we did a generic poll about two potential revenue sources in the spring and you have that information. Um, there is an intent to do some polling about, um, a fire district sometime in the fall. We need to be, we need to be cautious to not create, uh, polling fatigue. And so, um, part of the advice that we got recently from a pollster is that we should probably not be polling until we are able to talk to the community about this overall budget challenge that we have and how we hope to, uh, solve it. So, um, the, the shorter version is polling is an option yet to be decided. We'll keep it on the table until the council decides either to do it or not do it.
Thank you for that insight. Kelly, do you have your hand up or was that from your previous question?
I'm sorry, I'll take it down.
Okay. Go ahead, Jennifer.
No, I don't.
I think, I think there's someone else with their hand up. I just can't read.
Uh, uh, that was Allison and she just asked her question.
Oh, got it. Okay, thanks. So, um, the last slide, these are really small things. So we could do parking meters. We could consider red light cameras. We could have a bicycle registration fee. Um, we could look at clean energy surcharges and, um, hazardous substance user fees. Those are things that different municipalities, um, do. So, but I think these all are pretty low dollar options. And yep, that's, that's the end of the list. So it sounds like let's bounce back up to the top. Um, so that's the property tax and then the income tax. And, um, Council Manke has, has put on the table specifically that she's interested in us looking more deeply at a payroll tax and what that might look like.
Okay, one minute. Uh, we've got Peter that has raised his hand. Peter, before we start this other discussion, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna dive in, so whatever.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, so really sort of two, two questions, I think. One question, one comment. Um, I wonder if rather than, from a process standpoint, go through thirty different things and vote or however we're gonna do it, does it pay, um, because there seemed to be a consensus, at least verbally, um, to sort of carve out, pick a number, pick $250,000 a year, $500,000, whatever a tax will raise and limit our conversation to those higher dollar things? Just i, if Jennifer could, and I'm sorry to have her do more work, sorry about that, but if we could have the five or ten or twenty, whatever turns out to be out of that list that raised X amount of money, if we all agreed on that and work on those? And then the other question that I have is, um, and I, I'm not sure if, well, the, the question would be, are we sure that all the current taxes that we have, the revenue that we generate, that we're actually collecting and, and billing? You know, I think of it in a hospital sense. Are we billing properly? Are we doing all, are we gathering everything that, that is possible right now? Or are we leaving money on the table with existing, uh, revenue, revenue sources? So that's my question.
Um, I, I think your proposal of kind of us taking a cut at, you know, a, a financial threshold and bringing those back, I think that's an interesting way to cut it, um, and something that you all could discuss. And then secondarily, in terms of our collection rates, um, I think there, there are opportunities to do some auditing on some of the items, like the franchise fees or what have you. I think the delta is pretty minimal, um, in terms of that, but, and property tax, it just, it is, it is what it is. So, um, I, and I see Jeff, did you want to jump in?
I think you tackled most of what I was going to, um, mention, Jennifer, so I'm good. Thank you.
The other piece is that, uh, through the municipal courts, we have quite a bit of, uh, outstanding unpaid there. And I think the only thing that we've done over the years that have made some headway is to give, uh, a, a certain percent relief if you come in and take care of that. And I, I think the last time we did that, we had successes of maybe a million dollars collected. Am I off on that?
Um, I had no idea that, um, it might have generated that staggering of a sum. Um, so I will, I will absolutely double check.
Kelly, do you, do you remember, Kelly? Because I, I mean, we've been through that a couple of times. That very first one, we had a, an, um, a, a unreal amount.
I, I think we did pretty well, but I, I don't think it was anything close to a million.
Okay. Maybe it was, maybe it was a million outstanding and then we got a significant amount, because I know...
That's more like it.
Yeah, maybe a million outstanding and then we, we cut it in half if you would make your payment. And so maybe it was 300,000 or something like that.
Mr. Mayor?
I think that's much more likely.
Okay. Uh, Remy?
Uh, thank you. Um, to the point you were just making, there was a, a, a very large outstanding number, um, a, and I don't know the outcome of that. But what I wanted to put in here is that, um, I do agree with Peter in that trying to work through all these slides as a large group without, uh, any, uh, clear system in place or scoring system in place i, is going to be difficult. Um, that said, I, to me, there are things that will very clearly come off of here. And some of the reasons that they would come off of here, uh, for me very clearly, is because of the way that they would reverberate into some of the other goals that we're trying to achieve that, um, aren't specific number based. So, uh, achieving affordable housing, which is, we all know is a tremendous and only growing issue for the city of McMinville. There's also a number of equity issues, um, that are within this. And then on top of that, there are issues related to COVID. Um, I'm going to give an example. I'm not trying to start specific conversations. I'm just giving one example. Uh, uh, if we as a city wanted to really be the nail in the coffin of a number of small restaurants, we could tax them on top of them having been forcibly closed for years and years and having a broken supply chain and not being able to get labor. Um, so there, there's a number of things on this that are very clear to me, but I want to bring it back to the equity issue because I do believe it would be important to engage the DEI Advisory Committee, um, in this conversation moving forward. And, uh, I like the idea of a proposed system. I don't necessarily agree with Peter that we're trying to specifically hit one number or that there needs to be, um, a process of, uh, elimination based on how many of these things could equate to that number. But I do think that going through them with individual perspectives and, uh, information available to us, it would benefit us to do something of a, a, a ranking system or ranking exercise and, and bringing that back, um, not wholly dissimilar to what we just did in our Level Ten meeting, um, uh, uh, because it's just so many points to go through. Thank you.
Okay, Sal, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I would like to just second much of what, um, Remy said with regard to what, while I do think that it might be a good idea to, um, prioritize, uh, this group's time on some of the higher ticket items, I wouldn't want to necessarily see some of the lower ticket items come off the list just because it would require us doing several of them to, uh, come up with the same money. Um, and on that point, I think that, um, it might be worth it to sort of set aside, um, that might be the wrong word, but, but sort of put into a slightly different category, uh, revenue streams that would be specific to a certain type of, um, task, you know, a revenue stream that has to be spent on a specific nexus. Because from what I looked at in those slides, it seemed like those tended to be lower ticket items. Um, and I think that the conversation about those should probably occur within the context of some sort of programmatic change rather than more of a general budget conversation. So those are my observations on this. Peace.
Thank you, Sal. Uh, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and sort of at the risk of cutting off the conversation, which is not what I'm intending to do, um, we could, we could sort of regather just based on what we've heard and what we've presented to you now, um, we could basically create a ballot for the council and the budget committee. Um, we could, without, I think, a huge amount of work, we could probably identify, um, the several, um, resource options that would generate, you know, six plus figures a year net, um, sort of like the higher category and then the lower category. And then just ask you to sort of do like a, you know, a, you know, a four-way, kind of a Likert scale of, um, yeah, I'd rather dig my fork, dig my eye out with a fork than talk about this again. Um, this one hurts, I'd rather not. I'm kind of interested or this is really great, let's do it. So we could do some sort of a four, kind of a four-point scale, allow you to rank, you know, categorize each of them, bring the collective information back to the group with sort of a, here's where it seems to be shaking out and get some collective buy-in on doing a higher level of, um, sort of, uh, analysis and investigation. I, is that something that appeals to the group at this point? And I, and I think that that would be the time where we would also identify sort of key equity issues. Um, I think there was actually one of the questions, um, that was in the Q and A packet. Um, I think we would like to utilize the DEI Committee to make sure that we are using the right tools to evaluate these revenues. I don't know that we would necessarily run, you know, fifteen revenue strategies specifically by them. We'd probably want them to weigh in on, you know, what's the right equity lens to use, uh, for this discussion.
I don't know that I agree with you. Um, I think if you look at the composition of the Budget Committee and the Council and that, and then you say that this body through this much more limited lens is going to identify revenue options, uh, that will have an effect on every citizen of the community of McMinville. And the composition of the community of McMinville is not rec, uh, represented in this council and it is not represented in this budget committee. I think that there is a further discussion that needs to be had, uh, about, um, the steps here. And without getting into, um, you know, I, I recognize my comments are running the risk of getting into the administrative process here. And I'm wary of that and I apologize if I am out of bounds on these comments, but if we are going to have that committee do the work that we appointed them to, appointed them to do, I think it's appropriate to ask at what point do we flush, uh, uh, data, information and questions through them? Uh, I, and I hope that that's received with all the respect that is intended to, uh, to Mr. Towery.
So I, I don't know that we're disagreeing. I, I, I am saying to you and the rest of the group, I think that the DEI Committee has an important role to play in this exercise. I'm not willing to tell you they're the right body to evaluate fifty revenue sources individually one by one. That's my point is we, we're not disagreeing on them being a really critical resource to this series of conversations, but I don't think we have enough information to have the how, uh, to engage them yet.
An, any further questions, uh, from that perspective, Remy? Response to Jeff?
Um, I mean, I, I would be happy to continue this conversation and maybe this is not the, the, the best place for it. I think that we're, we're kind of getting into a little nitty gritty of, of perspective on, 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 um, how you do equity work. And, and I don't want to do that in this forum. Um, I do want to move forward through this and I will be very sensitive to the equity lens and, and if we do a ranking process, um, as the liaison to the DEI Advisory Committee, um, I can also ask some broad questions that, um, aren't, uh, affecting necessarily how, uh, the process that's determined here. Um, uh, and I understand that that committee won't necessarily have the expertise or won't have the expertise in each of these ar, areas, right? Um, uh, however, there are some things that I think will, um, I think there's good conversation to be had there as well and I want to facilitate that. Thank you.
And, and Remy, I think you're absolutely right. I think we have to understand how we're going to utilize them given their, their focus and things that are on their table. But I know the committee, having gone to most of their meetings, would like to be a part of this in some form or fashion.
So, hey, Jennifer, could I ask, could you unshare your screen? We're sort of at a discussion point. I don't know that we're necessarily relying on the slides. It might just be easier to see hands up and engage discussion this way. Thank you.
Okay, um, so then Sal was next and then Allison and then Kelly. Sal?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, I guess I would say that I do agree that, um, the DEI Committee, uh, does have a, uh, an important role to play. I just would, um, encourage Remy, uh, to make sure that the, um, that they have the context sufficient to, you know, m, make good decisions around it. I find a lot of times some of the subcommittees are not necessarily related to our city, but, but in other areas, they, they just don't have the information that they need to, to contribute oftentimes. So just to make sure that they have what they need. The second point I wanted to make is one related to, um, I've, I've heard the word ranking, um, these ideas as a group. And I just want to throw out one suggestion because I tend to find, um, systems of ranking where you order these, you know, one through five or whatever, tend to be pretty arbitrary. So I would, I would like to suggest that instead maybe an approval vote rather than ranking, which is where you have the counselors pick all of the ones that they could support and then come back with those because that has a way of, if you have a group of people and a, and a bunch of choices on a list, bubbling up the ones that have the broadest support. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Allison.
So I just wanted to go back to something Council President Grabkin said, and it's something I wrote to Jeff and Jennifer about today. Um, you know, Council President Grabkin, you mentioned about the nail in the coffin for small businesses and restaurants. And I was, I was writing to Jeff and Jennifer saying, I really urge us not to look at this through the COVID lens of the top of mind feelings that we have... through the COVID lens of the top-of-mind feelings that we have around what's happened in the last year. Because as far as I'm concerned, we're looking back over a growing deficit, which, you know, I think Councilmember Chenoweth talked about over the last five or 10 years. And we can't put the COVID perspective onto it when we make the determination of what's going to fix the issue going forward. I think when I looked at these Eugene options, I kept thinking, well, in the current climate, that can't work, that can't work, that can't work. But several of these take two or three, one or two years to implement, at which point we might find ourselves in a very different perspective. So I just urge us not to, to use the lens of the COVID experience to make a determination about what options we choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Let's go to Kelly, and then back to Remy.
Okay.
You're coming across good.
Hear me?
Now, yes.
Okay. I always assumed that this would get some filtration with the DEI lens. I have no problem with that. I just feel like, you know, that they're not the City Council and the Budget Committee, but I definitely think they should look at it from an equity point of view. I still feel like we should give some kind of financial ranking to the ones and give them some idea. And when I went through and read the Eugene report, and I actually read it twice, it seemed to me like they took a lot into consideration, and they had some equity ideas of how to implement things built into some of their suggestions. So, you know, if you're going to put these together, if you could look towards Eugene information, and, and, you know, perhaps pick some of that up and go through it to write, not rank, but to give, and Sal puts it, what he could give support to.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go back to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, I understand the DI Advisory Committee is just that, an advisory committee, not a decision-making committee. And I'm not suggesting that they would be producing a list from which the council to choose, rather, given the opportunity to reflect on any initiatives which were remarkably on one side or the other of the equity issue. That, that, that would be their role, would be to, to, to offer that, that perspective. And then I have to contest the idea that we do not take COVID considerations into concern. It has not been one year. Many of our small businesses have been forcibly closed from March of 2020 until the end of June of 2021. So it has been a year and a half, and those businesses, they're, they are not, there are a number of businesses that are down so significantly that they are still at risk of closing. And their recovery will not be instantaneous. And having an empty downtown serves nobody in McMinnville. The McMinnville Downtown Association was originally formed to work on the economic vitality of downtown McMinnville that we so rely upon. And we are thinking long-term, but we must also be considerate of the short term as we go forward. We have to support our local downtown business owners, especially those who have been closed, revenue streams, and have been cut off really completely. Businesses downtown are not down a little bit. And I'm not making a blanket statement about all businesses downtown. But I know that there are many businesses whose income is beyond significantly lower than it has ever been. And they must be considered. We need to support and preserve downtown business and have both a short and long-term vision as we move through this.
Thank you, Remy. Peter, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, just sort of a clarifying comment. You know, when I suggested, you know, the dollars, I didn't say we make a strict dollar decision. It was really just to begin to pare the options down. Because I think, you know, Remy brings up a couple of good points. I mean, everybody has. I mean, I think, once you get a list, there's a whole next level of questions to ask. Does it hurt competitiveness? Does it, you know, I mean, just go down a whole pile of lists. Is it, you know, is it going to attract more businesses, you know, or those kinds of things. So I just was trying to find a way for us to take a list of 30, and since we're a committee of, whatever it is, 25 people, you know, to try to find a way to at least narrow some things down so we could get to a more, you know, a more detailed conversation going forward.
Yeah, we don't get caught in the mire, so to speak, because we could spend a lot of time just turning our wheels. Kelly, did you, you have your hand up again, or? Okay, she's taking it down. Jeff?
So I do think we could produce a document for you that would give you some high-level expectation of sort of the really large order of magnitude or small order of magnitude dollars to generate. We could put together a ranking system that got to the issue of supportability, as Counselor Peralta identified. And I think we could turn that around in a relatively short period of time and get that out to the group, and then compile the results and report back to you. If that's, if that, if that feels like a reasonable next step, and member Ostetler is right, I think this is sort of the first cut, and there's going to be another cut, and another cut, and another cut before you have the kind of information that really can inform both community engagement outreach and any actions that the council would take, or the Budget Committee would take down the road.
Thank you, Jeff. So I will just open it up to any of the councilors or Budget Committee members. Any additional discussions or thoughts? I think Jeff did a good job of summarizing what he felt the staff could bring back to us for next steps. So I'll ask one more time, Budget Committee members or councilors, any further comments or discussions from your perspective? I'll go check page two. I don't-
Kelly, I think he has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. I think, sure, if that's how we want to move forward to make that, make that process cool. The other one I want to go for is, I guess, just come back to the fact of, what's our, what's still our revenue goal? I know we've been told that the short, the shortage is $2 million, and that's to get back to, to par and parity of the last couple of years of, 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 you know, continuing deferred maintenance and not getting ahead and proactive on plans and things. And so I guess, are we able to further that discussion as we wait for more information to come back on, on sort of direct revenue options? Do we need to, do we need to just move this forward and stop, and then, and then start that discussion? Are we able to have that? Am I the only one that wants to be more ambitious and try and, try and go out for revenue options that, that will get us further than just the $2 million is projected to get us, and to have the conversations around how to get, you know, parks back up and start to take on and do other things as well? Or, or I guess Jeff's got his hand up, ready to give you the answer, so.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So that's the goal. So the executive team is going to have their second full day on core services on Thursday of this week. We are, I'm going to say cautiously optimistic that we will have a near-final product after Thursday that we could share with the council and the Budget Committee, that, that gets to those sort of order of magnitude service impacts that you're asking about now, Zach. And I think that having that, you know, what would we use the money for, what would services look like, has to inform the how much money are we really interested in raising, or do we feel like we need to raise. So you can't really do either of those exercises in isolation. I know that part of the frustration is you don't have all of that information yet, but we're, we're working to get that to you.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for the question, Zach. So at this point, I don't see any other hands. So I'm going to go to Jennifer and to Jeff and see if we have given you enough direction now for the next step. I think we have, but I'll ask Jennifer, because you're going to be orchestrating that with your department, and then Jeff as the city manager. I think Jeff just gave me a thumbs up in referring to Zach's question, but just, I just want to touch base, make sure that we, we know our next steps.
Well, actually, I guess a question I have for you guys is, my understanding is that the first meeting in August, the 10th, is also light in terms of business activities currently on the, on the agenda. So one thing I could do is format, seriously, in the next couple of days, a Google poll. It's not going to give you a lot more information in terms of, you know, is this a progressive tax or, or not, you know, that kind of thing. But if you all could turn that, your ballots or your impressions within, you know, a week kind of thing, then we could go over those results on the 10th. Just, I don't think I would have the information for you. Typically, your packet would go out the week before on the 2nd. That wouldn't give you enough, me enough time to make, make it, and you all to give me the feedback. So if you felt like you could move forward on decision-making with me getting you the poll, say, by, by the 5th ahead of the 10th, maybe that's a way to keep things moving forward. And at that meeting, make some choices about which are the ones that merit more review.
That feels good with me. I see a couple of raised thumbs. Anyone want to comment? We'll just need to carve out a little time and, and work through that document. And I'm seeing more and more thumbs go up. So Jennifer, I think you hit a great solution for us to move forward. And we do have a very, at this point, a light agenda on August 10th. And we, we know that maybe people might have other obligations that can't be a part of that. But we do, we know that we have the capacity at our August 10th meeting to have a discussion. Peter?
Yeah, that, that makes great sense to me. Thanks. Jeff, I just have a clarifying question. When you say you're going to review core services and stuff, does that get a little bit to the conversation that we had earlier with Sal and Chris about sort of expenses and where things are, and, and, you know, sort of growth of expenses? I'm not saying it necessarily in a negative way, but it's more, I, I look at both, you have to look at both the revenue and the expense side of the ledger, is really what I'm, what I'm trying to say. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think so. I, the, I think the work that we're doing on core services will, will provide the kind of information that folks seem to be asking about. I don't know that we're going to relitigate, you know, the last 15 years of budget history for how we got to where we are. I mean, there are answers to those questions, and we can provide them for you in terms of sort of historical context.
So, but, but will you also, in that sort of, you know, at least think out loud about, I hate to say ideal state, but, you know, sort of a little bit of the wish list as well?
100%. Yes, absolutely. We will.
Okay. And, and I assume the wish list can be both ways. Hey, we can, this is a service that not many people use. We can do something different with it. Here's a service that a lot of people use. We really ought to think about expanding it if we can afford it.
Yeah, those are the kinds of conversations we're having, yes.
Cool. Thanks.
Okay, I don't see any additional hands. I think we have a direction. Any last comments from anyone? We will get, we will get that survey out from Jennifer that'll give us more opportunity to share, and then help her prepare for our next meeting on the 10th of August. And we'll get, we'll get an email out to everyone so that if we, if we're headed in that direction, and I think we are right now, put a, put a soft hold on August 10th for the, for the Budget Committee. Councilors will be here anyhow. So with that, I'll go ahead and I will adjourn the joint City Council and Budget Committee meeting and return to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. Again, Budget Committee members, thank you. We've heard you loud and clear that you want to be more a part of this process. We've had more meetings so far this year than we've ever had before. So again, thank you, and just hang with us as we go through this process. Lots of transparency, and we'll get to the end. Thanks.
Hey, Peter, next time if you wake up Jerry Hart, make sure he drags his- Oh, I'm going to pay for that one.
Okay, let's go ahead and move. That takes us to number five, advice and informational items. And so we'll start with reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. I'll go ahead and just go across my screen. Zach, your first, Kelly's next, and then Sal?
Man, to go last, I should have put my hand up, and then I would have been able to go last. Okay, just quick, sharing the page, my notes, the MacPac meets next week. And that is, we're getting close to the end, and actually, that would be a good meeting. We're kind of continuing a lot of the discussions we had last week, because we just didn't have enough time to contain those good discussions. Those discussions are germane to location, citing, the kind of content and scope of that final recommendation, as well as finances. And in the intermediate time between last meeting and this meeting, a finance subcommittee is launched and had a couple of meetings and had good discussions. So look forward to hearing what their discussions have led to. Landscape Review Committee meets tomorrow at noon, and on the agenda is a landscape plan on Alpha Drive to consider for approval, as well as diving back into development code revisions. So that's my update for this week. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to, now everything changed. Kelly, I have you now, next.
Okay. Well, I'll speak briefly about YCAP. We met today for a couple hours. From a budget point of view, they're up, this last month over month, they're up $3 million. Of that, 1.7 million was from, I think, OHCA. It was for the turnkey operation, which was an in, and then it went directly out. Also, it went directly out to Providence to purchase the hotel. The other thing was about $430,000 of PPP loans were excused. So that was a nice thing. So that cleared their, all their accounts, or their short-term loans. I'll talk very briefly about Dan Hill County Youth Outreach, or McMinnville Youth Outreach. It's not going quite as fast as they had hoped. They had hoped to get it up and running this, this, in the next couple of months. However, they have put out at least three grants to provide funding for it. It's been a little bit difficult because they've been unable to go and look at the building as of yet, until they have some kind of funding options and stuff like that. The county hasn't allowed them in. In the meeting today, Mary suggested that she would make sure they got in to at least look at the building and start getting some bids going. Youth Outreach itself is during gang fester. They've got all sorts of activities going. They have a really great gal who's running it named Amber. I don't really have a great deal more on this. I have a very lengthy report, but it's getting late. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go over to Adam.
I don't really have anything to report tonight, other than if you are a PulsePoint user, you will have seen that we've done a soft launch, which has been a long process to get PulsePoint to our YCOM users, and led by the city of McMinnville and Rich over at the Fire Department. So we will do a full, full launch on that in the coming weeks. And yeah, it's pretty exciting for people that follow that app. It allows community members that might have an AED in their, in their place of business to recognize somebody's in cardiac arrest at a nearby business and, and get there and apply that before. apply that before our medics could get on scene. And so it's been known to save people from heart attacks as well as, you know, you'll see other calls come through on that as well. And if you follow YAMCO Watch, you've seen them post PulsePoint screenshots from Washington County and Twelton Valley. So it's definitely an app that's speed and helps get us some community response to certain things that we could benefit from a quicker response time when you're in cardiac arrest. Seconds matter and sometimes our medics are minutes out.
Thank you for that report, Adam. Let's go to Chris.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. For Council of Governments, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we're getting ready to set up some Zoom training sessions for cities and and local jurisdictions. They've come up with the four main topics for those. They're going to be land use planning, housing, emergency preparation, and preservation of heritage trees. Our executive director, Scott Dadson, wanted to make sure and have me communicate his appreciation for Jeff Towery and his support at the meetings that they had last week in talking through some of the issues that they had. The other aspect of the report, we got the feedback from Council of Governments lobbyist on the final report for our legislative session. So I'm just going to go through it because a lot of times we don't I don't bring these up in this meeting. So we supported House Bill 2345, which is funding for rural Oregon capacity. Basically, this is a bill that assists rural jurisdictions that apply for and administer grants and other forms of funding. So it basically is helping the smaller cities comply with the the grant funding that they're going to be getting from ARPA through the federal funds this year. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we supported the increased funding for Project Turnkey. We supported House Bill 2341, which is property tax relief for Oregonians who are impacted by the 2020 wildfires. Basically, it waives property taxes for businesses and individuals who are impacted by the fires. And then the one of the big ones that included some pieces for a funding for the city of McMenville, a House Bill 5042, which is rural funding for communities impacted by the fire fires. It included 605 million in federal funds for federal emergency management associated reimbursements, 195 million in general fund grants to school districts and ESDs for summer learning programs, enrichment programs, and childcare, including MSD, McMenville School District, 40 million in general fund for summer enrichment programs for community-based organizations, 70 million in general fund for wildfire-related food and shelter cost reimbursements, 69 million in other FEMA reimbursements, and 20 million in general fund for the local community navigation centers. One of those were flagged for here in McMenville. So we got funding both for the navigation center and the Turnkey Center in this legislative session, which I think is really exciting in terms of trying to address housing and homelessness. And and in general, I think one out of four bills passed legislatively, but the Council of Governments, we passed five out of six bills on our agenda. The only one that failed was support for for property owners who had to replace their sewer lines as a result of the fires. So that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal, and thank you for your good work with the COG and being their board chair this year. I know that's taking additional time from that you're putting in there and giving good leadership. So thank you. I don't see Remy. It looks like she may have dropped off. I'll just call and see if.
I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you. I I don't have a tremendous amount to report. Tomorrow, we have the meeting of the McMenville Affordable Housing Committee. That meeting is at 10:00 AM and will be available on Zoom. And then I I'm sorry if I miss this, but I was interested. Mr. Towery, your city manager, sent out an email today from the county that I thought had relevant information for citizens of McMenville regarding current public health. And I was wondering if you might be willing to share that this evening. Thank you.
So we'll just ask for Jeff to do that when he makes his report. Okay, and then from my perspective, the New Brook Dundee Bypass Committee meeting is tomorrow morning. We have the mayor's conference, and so many mayors are part of that discussion. So we moved it one day earlier from Thursday to Wednesday. Again, I've been telling you the good story of of funding sources that have started to align themselves, starting with the governor's 32 million. The House Senator or Congresswoman Bonamici's 8 million still needs to go through the Senate and Wyden Merkley's 2 million. That gives us 42 million. We've reached out and we're talking to the entities, the cities, the county, the tribe about local matches. And we met with Dave Hoggleberg and myself met with Jeff yesterday and and gave the city a direction of where we might be going. We need to position ourselves to be able to match some of those dollars that are coming out through the infrastructure process and all is well, and we're making some headway from that perspective. I I wanted just to let you know that last Tuesday night, the MAC Water and Light Board, we met, we talked about water rate, the scheduled water rate increases, and we're going to be doing a a public hearing in later this year to do that. We also talked about the facility that Water and Light is working towards. We've got design on a kind of a service station that Water and Light would have adequate gasoline and diesel for their trucks in case of emergency because we still got to keep the lights and the water going. And then we had a good discussion about facility and a possible rearranging of some of the assets out at MAC Water and Light, a new administrative building. Again, these are things that are well down the road, but things that we're talking about right now. With that being said, let's go ahead and Jennifer, thank you for your discussion tonight. Anything that you would need to share from a reporting standpoint?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to share a couple of items.
Good.
So just want to let people know that starting the first Monday in August, which is next week, at the municipal court, we on Mondays, we are going to start having appointments and drop-ins in person. So this will be our first foray back into meeting with people, you know, in person instead of on Zoom for, I think it came up in the discussion, it's been since March. So I mean, a long time. So we're really excited about that and we'll be building on that, seeing seeing how it works. Do we need to adjust schedules, that kind of thing? And so we don't have a hard date for starting hybrid court in person, but we are planning for that as well. So wanted to let folks know about that. And also, just there, there are a lot of LOC messages going out about state shared revenue. And I just wanted to let people know that there was an administrative issue that we became aware of last week. And there is a deadline this week of turning in our state shared revenue certifications. And we finally were able to connect literally today with the right people at the Department of Administrative Services, and we filed all that paperwork. So please don't worry. We're good. We're going to get our state shared revenues. So just wanted to let folks know in case you see the city of McMenville on lists of not having done what they were supposed to have done. So that's all I have to share.
And thank you, Jennifer, for your hard work to get through all of that. Let's go over to Heather Richards. Heather?
Good evening, Mayor. Nothing additional to add tonight.
Thank you. Kylie?
And nothing for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. At the Civic Center, do we have chief, any of the chiefs there, I guess? I think I saw Matt there earlier.
What else? What else would you like me to report for you, Chief?
We have Chief Rich.
Matt asked me if I could report for he and the attorney on the fact that the Oregon International Air Show will be kicking off this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we are wrapping up our prep and plans to address those issues with that weekend event. In addition, there's going to be a large event at the Evergreen simultaneously facility. So that area is going to be pretty busy for the for the weekend. And most of your public safety crews will be out and about working through that event. And we move right from that event into the county fair, followed up following the next week. So it's kind of a busy summer summer event season for us as we're moving forward.
And 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 Rich and Matt, thank you for and Heather working with Evergreen to be able to take care of the needs of of them being able to do the air show. So Steve was very thankful for this good response from the city on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think what I'll do, Jeff, I'll go to you and then go to Amanda because she has some things to take us through for a appeal, voter of the Verizon application, some information. So go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. For members of the public, we received a weekly update from the Yamhill County Public Health Department relating to COVID-19 in Yamhill County. We're continuing to see a steady increase in case counts in the county, including 30 cases yesterday. The the belief is that this is likely driven by the Delta variant of COVID-19, which is not necessarily more deadly, but is twice as transmissible and 40 to 60% more contagious than the original variant. We're going to continue to see increases across the state, at least in the near term. Vaccinations are still available. We are in lean, Yamhill County, we're at just under 60% of the county population age 12 and older who have been vaccinated. There are still opportunities for vaccines primarily at the Yamhill County Public Health Office, although tonight they had a they had a tent set up at the Summer Concert Series and for the last several weeks and continuing into the future, they will also have a booth at the McMenville Farmers Market on Thursdays. I don't have anything else to report to you tonight. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. And then I'll call on Amanda to give a report and then to to go forward with her agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and I apologize. My laptop decided it needed to do an update at 7:38 this evening, so I hustled over here. So my update, well, first I was going to start with the air show, but Rich decided to steal my thunder on that one. So I'll move on to annexations. I want to address Mr. Davis's public comment briefly regarding annexations since that came to the council at the last work session. And there's two different processes here that I wanted to discuss. The first is the process for adopting the code language regarding annexations. This will go through a public hearing process with the Planning Commission before coming to council because in addition to Title 16 being revised, Title 17, our zoning ordinance will will also be revised. So the public will be able to provide input in regarding the code language specifically prior to it being considered by the council. Then with regard to the process for new development coming into the city, with the expansion of the urban growth boundary adopted by the council in 2020, the council at that time adopted new processes for development being added into the city. Those new processes allow for significantly more public input than previously allowed. They start with an area plan that is prior to annexation. This is generally initiated by the city council and will be the guiding legislative land use document for subsets of the urban growth boundary and will outline the expectations and requirements for the particular expansion area of the UGB. So the area plan is really a 10,000-foot view of the area that's proposed to come into the city, and it will identify locations of larger concepts such as high-density housing, major transportation corridors, neighborhood activity centers, and so on. So it is a more it's more in-depth than the comprehensive plan designations that the city currently has. After the area plan, there's master plans that will be required for annexation into the city, generally speaking. They are developed by the property owner as the property owner is also going through the annexation process. An approval of the master plan will be required as part of a quasi-judicial land use process. So in a quasi-judicial land use process, that is subject to potential appeal to Luba if a member of the community comes and testifies and and chooses to do so. So in other words, and kind of generally breaking it down, the process of area planning, master planning, and annexation actually allow for significantly more public input and resolve many issues raised by community members without going to an elector vote. This process is a community-based approach in solving concerns about public input on development that will be added to the city. The annexation process that is now in the works is the result of not only the stand mandate under ORS 222.127, but also the changes the city made as a result of the new UGB adopted by the city in 2020 and approved by the state in 2021. So again, this will be coming back to the council, but only after a process with the Planning Commission. I'll answer any questions about the annexation process generally, or I might defer to Heather. Otherwise, I'll get into my agenda item regarding Verizon.
So any questions for Amanda or for Heather on the annexation? And Mark, we recognize that you sent the 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 letter and your thoughtfulness as always and being able to raise some of the concerns and issues that you have. Okay, it looks like all thumbs up on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to say really quickly, thank you very much for for addressing that.
Happy to do it.
Okay, in front of us tonight, we have a under consideration, the appeal of the Yamhill County Approval for Docket Number M0120 SRD 20-20. And so Amanda, this is dealing with the Verizon application that we've had some discussion on, and you're going to bring a motion before us this evening. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So again, this is an update regarding the Verizon cell tower monopole that is proposed to be built just outside the city limits. And I will also be asking for authorization from the council to pursue an appeal with the Land Use Board of Appeals and also with the Court of Oregon Court of Appeals thereafter. So just as a brief reminder, both to the council and to the public, Yamhill County Planning Director approved docket number M-01-20/SDR-20-20 for the construction of a hunt of a 100-foot-tall Verizon cell tower monopole on EFU land adjacent to the city limits at Hill Road and Redmond Hill Road. The city appealed to the Board of County Commissioners on March 29, 2021, and the hearing on that matter was continued a couple times. So from April through this month, the city worked with Verizon and other property owners to find a solution that could work for Verizon and the community that would be located within the city limits. On July 1, 2021, the Yamhill County Board of County Commissioners voted two to one to deny the city's appeal and affirm the development of Verizon's 100-foot-tall monopole. On July 22, 2021, the board adopted its findings and issued its final order. So under Luba's rules, we have 21 days from the date of that of the date of that final order to file a notice of intent to appeal to Luba. So the main issue that we're dealing with is the meaning and applicability of ORS 215.275, and that regulates utilities on EFU land and expressly prohibits utilities on lands unless no other reasonable alternative exists. The city's position is that there are reasonable alternatives that do exist, and due to some additional errors, both procedurally and in interpreting certain case law, I'm recommending that the council pursue an appeal of the county's decision before the Land Use Board of Appeals and if necessary, also to the Oregon Court of Appeals. As such, I recommend that the council authorize me as city attorney to pursue an appeal before the Land Use Board of Appeals and the Oregon Court of Appeals if needed on Yamhill County Docket Number M-01-20/SDR-20-20.
Any questions for Amanda on this? Any questions for Amanda on this? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the city attorney to appeal, uh, Yamhill County Approval of the Verizon Application, Docket Number M-01-20/SDR-20-20 to the, um, Land Use Board of Appeals and the Oregon Court of Appeals.
So moved.
Okay. And second. So, uh, moved by Sal and seconded by Zach. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This, um, motion of approval passes unanimously six to zero.
It's not going there fast, though.
Yeah. So, um, uh, this, uh, takes us to the end of our meeting this evening. Uh, so I will go, go ahead and adjourn, uh, City Council Meeting at 9:22. Thanks for your participation this evening and have a great evening, everyone.